Good evening, everyone. Please may I remind everyone that the proceedings are being recorded. Can we take the notice concluding the meeting as read?
Agreed.
The next item is the minutes of the last ordinary meeting of the council, held on the 30th of January 2019. Can we read those minutes?
Agreed.
Declarations of interest. Members have been asked to display their declarations of interest on the board at the entrance to the chamber. Members are reminded that dispensations have been granted to all those members who applied for them. In order to deal with matters relating to the budget and to the council tax, do any members have any further declarations? Thank you. There are no announcements this evening. Apologies. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have apologies from councillors Cheffer, Elliott, Essel, Howe, F Miller, O'Neill, Porthouse, P Smith, D Snowden, D E Snowden, Spedding, Walker, Waters, Watson, Kay Wood, and Alderman, Arnett, and Greenfield.
Thank you. Are there any further apologies? Chancellor Nespichar?
Then I will be there.
Then I will be there. Any other apologies? Thank you very much indeed, Lady Nurse. I now call upon the leader to move at the approval and adoption of the report to the Cabinet. Leader?
Aye, so moved, Madam Mayor.
His second's the report.
I set the report, Madam Mayor. You have the right to speak, but it's a standard motion.
Thank you very much indeed. Leader, would you like to speak to the Cabinet report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I formally move the revenue budget and capital programme for next year. As has been the case in recent years, there is again some very positive news in respect of the investment we are making in our city. However, once again, there are also some very difficult decisions to be made in order to deliver a balanced budget. Madam Mayor, it is now nine years since this government began imposing austerity measures on local councils, with the persistent and compound impact of those cuts on the much-needed local services which this council provides. The Chancellor in his budget speech in November said that austerity was coming to an end, but from a local government funding perspective, there is absolutely no evidence to support this, so far, with Tory cuts still programmed in till 2021, 2022 for local authorities. Since the coalition government of 2010 and the subsequent Tory government that followed, the United Kingdom has moved to be the lowest performing economy of the G7, and it is now expected that growth in quarter one of 29 will be zero, as manufacturing, construction, and our service sectors continue to be badly affected by the failed mantra of austerity politics as we head towards stag nason and the possibility of stag flesh and ruining its ugly head again. The local government finance settlement has offered only limited additional one-off funding to help support the pressures which we are experiencing in both children's and adult social care. While the additional funding we are to receive through the Winter Pressures Grant and Social Care Grant next year is welcomed, the fact it is one-off funding does not provide an ongoing sustainable solution for the significant cost and demand pressures we are facing in social care each and every year. Out of necessity, councils across the country are overspending on children's and adults' social care. A Public Accounts Committee report published in February shows that core funding from central government has been slashed by 50% since austerity began, at the same time as demand for services has increased, the same demand being caused by the inevitable outcomes of the self-staying austerity politics heaped onto the British people by the Lib Dems and Conservatives in coalition. Analysis by the Institute of Fiscal Studies published in February indicates that the Chancellor needs to find a further £5 billion of funding by 2023/24 to avoid further cuts. Yet this government continues to deny the impact which austerity continues to have on services at a local level. The perilous state of affairs will not be resolved through short-term cash injections which this government seems to favour, as it's mere sticking plasters to get Tory ministers through another headline. It is imperative to the future sustainability of local government that the spending review to be undertaken by government this year recognises the importance of all the services provided by local government. They must ensure the right level of funding is made available to support local needs. While on the one hand, this type of one-off limited additional funding is being provided, on the other, this government has cut our revenue support grant by almost £9 billion for next year. That's a staggering 23% cut to a city that can least afford it. The social care precept was introduced by government three years ago to allow councils to raise more money locally to offset some of the cuts in government funding, but that pernicious decision just shifts the burden of payment from central government to the council taxpayer and the working poor. However, it also disadvantages councils such as ours with a low council tax base. Put simply, we cannot raise as much through council tax as councils in more affluent areas can. The government is currently reviewing the way that local government is funded and plans to move to a system of 75% retained business rates and to introduce a revised methodology for allocating the total resources available through a fair funding approach. Call me sceptical, but we'll wait and see just how fair the unfair funding approach turns out to be, given this government's record of directing funding to wealthier areas of the country in the south. Madam Mayor, it is fair to say that the compound impact of austerity has hit higher needs areas like Sunderland particularly hard. It is therefore essential that the outcomes of the fair funding review recognise the needs of the city and the spending review recognises the severe damage which nine years of austerity has caused to local services and to local people. These government-led changes to the way we are funded are due to be implemented from April 2020, and that is little more than a year away, yet they will not be able to tell us what the impact on our funding will be until late summer or even early autumn of this year. How on earth do they expect us to be able to do sound financial planning for 2021 when we don't know where the pitch is, never mind where the goalposts are going to be? For now though, Madam Mayor, we must focus on setting a balanced budget for next year. Since 2010, we have worked hard to protect residents and communities from the impact of the cuts with more than £293 million already cut since austerity measures began, but we now need to find a further £25 million of cuts next year, with potentially £54 million needed to be cut by 2022. This means our ability to deliver even statutory functions will be severely put to the test, which brings with it very difficult decisions. The council continues to work with partners and communities to make the best use of all resources available. All funding we have is being prioritised to support statutory requirements and key priorities and to maximise the impact of other vital investments into Sunderland. As well as remodelling services and cutting costs, the council also needs to focus on enabling the city to be self-sustainable. We therefore need to continue to invest in Sunderland's infrastructure and focus on developing the economy if we are able to create more and better jobs and make the city more attractive to residents, visitors, and investors. Madam Mayor, I am pleased to say we are proposing a capital programme of almost £169 million next year, with a further £208 million of investment planned to be spent in the following three years. I think this demonstrates our ambition and commitment to make our city more prosperous and self-sufficient as we move confidently into the 21st century. However, Madam Mayor, the 2019-2020 budget has once again involved very difficult choices in order to deliver the reductions of the scale required. It is once again down to the work of portfolio holders, members, directors, and staff that we have been able to do this, and I do warmly thank them all. The City Council has done its best to protect residents from the impact of the cuts since 2010. For next year, the council will continue to maximise back office savings, more internal cuts, and streamline processes in order to minimise the impact on frontline services wherever possible. However, the ongoing compound impact of government cuts and significant cost pressures means that sadly increasingly difficult decisions do have to be made. Raising council tax is one of these very difficult decisions. The harsh fact is that we don't raise enough council tax now, and we will need to cut if we don't raise council tax now, sorry, we will need to cut services by even more, which will only impact on the most vulnerable members of our community. We have therefore taken the difficult decision to raise council tax in order to protect services from further cuts next year. Madam Mayor, the proposal is to raise council tax by a total of 3.99%, which is within the government's set referendum limit. This includes the social care precept implemented by the government to help fund adult social care pressures. As the proposed increase is below the government's limit, a referendum will not be required, and it represents an increase of £1.04 a week for the average bandee property and £70 a week for a bandee property. Madam Mayor, although this rise is not what we want, our council tax remains the lowest in the region, reflecting our continued drive to do all we can to deliver high-quality services which provide strong value for money for our residents. My Cabinet colleagues will soon brief their own...
Madam Mayor, I move an extension of the latest time to the conclusion of his speech, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My Cabinet colleagues will soon briefly present their own individual portfolios, but first I would like to highlight some key areas which form the cornerstone of our plans for 2019, 20, and into the medium term. We will ensure that we continue to protect the most vulnerable citizens within our communities through both children's and adult services provision. This commitment is reinforced by the inclusion of more than £17 million of additional funding to support cost and demand pressures in addition to capital investment. Other budget proposals set out today demonstrate the importance we place on delivering the services and support our communities want and need. This budget includes provision of ongoing funding to support a deep clean of the city centre, funding to help work against domestic violence, extra funding to support the city's events programme, and additional funding for each of the five area committees to support local priorities. In addition, as I said earlier, we are investing £169 million in the city's infrastructure next year, with a further £208 million planned to be spent in the following three years. As a council, we are working with the private sector to encourage and facilitate development and investment. The council and all of our partners continue to invest in the regeneration of the city with some major developments planned over the next few years. I am delighted to report that progress in developing the International Advanced Manufacturing Park continues apace with the aim of creating over 7,000 quality jobs, and following the completion of the Northern Spire, Phase Three of the Sunderland Strategic Transport Corridor will improve roads running from the New Wair crossing to Siney's Way, opening up opportunity for development of the south side of the river. There is additional investment to help regenerate our city centre and unlock the potential of the Volk site with a new civic centre and public sector hub development beside Keogh Square in our music, arts, and cultural quarter. Plans include investment in our neighbourhoods, our cultural assets, our schools, and in facilities for those most vulnerable in our communities. In addition, there is investment in vehicles, plant, and equipment to ensure our public-facing services can operate in the most efficient and effective way. These investments will help us grow our economy and make the city more resilient and attractive for residents, visitors, and investors. This will all help to make Sunderland a dynamic, vibrant, and healthy city through the delivery of a new ambitious city plan which is soon to be finalised, which will take us up to 2030 as a start. Madam Mayor, we are all entirely aware of how important financial resilience is when managing a council's finances, and I am pleased to say that the proposals before you today help support our continued financial resilience, with reserves remaining at prudent and appropriate levels for 2019, 20, and we do need to be prudent in the use of those reserves. We have to recognise that the vast majority of reserves are held with specific plans and projects in mind, such as investing in the capital programme. We must also recognise that we cannot use reserves to prop up the revenue budget on an ongoing ad hoc basis, something our opposition colleagues seem to be happy to disregard. Despite what the Chancellor has said, the impact of the coalition and Tory-inspired austerity measures is continuing apace, and so we must strive to deliver ongoing and sustainable solutions for the residents of Sunderland, the people that we are elected to defend from the worst of these cuts to local services. Theresa May, Philip Hammond, and Amber Rudd have all said, 'Judge us on our record', their records stinks, Madam Mayor. We have the lowest performing economy in the G7, we are heading towards zero growth in 2019, homelessness has doubled under their watch, over a million food bank parcels going to needy families, most of whom are in work every year and rising, a 40% drop in real-term income for working people since 2010, a massive increase in child poverty, the hated and dreadful Universal Credit programme delivering harm across the country, a 7% drop in spending per pupil across every school in England, unless you go to a private school of course, a massive crisis in our hospitals and adult social care with waiting lists so large now that the embarrassed and humble Tory government have stopped measuring the scale of their failure, and to capital the UN condemnation of the United Kingdom for abuse of the disabled. We are the sixth largest economy in the world, and we stand accused of failing to help those with the greatest needs in our society, all caused by the coalition decision back in 2010 by those treacherous, not-to-be-trusted Liberal Democrats and their Tory allies. The austerity politics, an attack on northern councils to shift money in local government from the north to Tory-supporting councils in the south was the price Liberal Democrats were happy to pay if it got them into government, ministerial pensions, and elevation to the House of Lords. Thankfully, five years later, the electorate repaid their betrayal of the British people by voting the Lib Democrats nearly into oblivion. All of this happening, of course, while we continue to give massive tax cuts to the wealthy and big business, while getting the working poor to shoulder that burden of cost. How come the Tories always cut taxes for the wealthy when there is apparently no money around, but expect the poorest in societies to shoulder the burden of cuts to their local services? Well, we on this side of the Chamber will work to protect and save people from the worst of those cuts. With that, Madam Mayor, I would like to conclude by saying that the proposals presented today are as robust and as fair as we are able to make them within the very difficult financial climate that Sunderland faces. I therefore commend to council this evening both the revenue budget and capital programme, which continue to be underpinned by our commitment to deliver value for money and the best services possible for our fantastic city and its residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Before dealing with any amendments, each of the Cabinet portfolios will speak to their own portfolio. Can we start, please, with Deputy Leader?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, before I start, can I just place on record our congratulations to Sunderland Football Club for a fantastic team. Head to Wembley on the 31st of March, I'm sure the whole council and the whole city will be hanging in that, and hopefully will bring some silverware back to the city. Madam Mayor, just briefly with regards to the Deputy Leader's portfolio, within these proposals is a continuation of our investment in the development of the International Advanced Manufacturing Park, as the Leader has outlined, with the aim of delivering additional investment into the city and creating around 7,000 jobs. We will also continue to provide financial assistance to business in the form of economic development grants to further support inward investment and job growth all across Sunderland, and we are supporting and encouraging investment in exciting plans and projects in the city centre. In addition, I am very happy to say that we have continued to invest in the port of Sunderland, which is vitally important to the city's ongoing regeneration and has a considerable contribution to make. This investment in its infrastructure will ensure that it has the operational capacity to make the business sustainable going forward. That's all I was to say at this stage, Madam Mayor, and I commend the proposals for the Deputy Leader's portfolio to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. Cabinet Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Cabinet Secretary, I support the budget proposals presented by the Leader of the council. We are once again in a very difficult position as a result of the persistent underfunding of local services by central government. Once again, we are left with no option other than to make some very difficult decisions which we are legally required to do to set a balanced budget, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank Cabinet colleagues, members, and officers who have worked hard to identify a balanced package of proposals, as we are able to do in a very difficult financial situation which we are faced with, with never-ending cuts in funding from Liberal Democrats and the Conservatives since 2010. Madam Mayor, the revenue and capital proposals have been thoroughly tested to ensure we target remaining funding on the key priorities of the city. The proposals include investment in services which are clearly a priority for the communities and support those most in need. In respect of my own portfolio, which covers corporate services, 2019, 20 will see us continue to provide corporate leadership on our budget and the medium-term financial strategy. Our residents would rightly expect back office services to take their fair share in the cuts, and we have continued to reduce those services despite significant cuts that have gone previously, Madam Mayor. However, ensuring that the council retains its financial resilience in 2019, 20, and beyond is clearly fundamental to our approach to handling the significant financial challenge we face. Madam Mayor, I think we need to pause and reflect over the thousands of staff that have left this council since 2010 due to cuts in funding by central government, by the Liberal Democrats and the Conservatives through their austerity programme. Madam Mayor, this year is no different. The council is once again having to make redundancies to inflict a life-changing decision on them and their families. Central government to continue to have a choice, but in making that choice, continue to favour tax cuts or provisions to support the most needed in our society. That is a view not of some left-wing think tank, but of the United Nations, Madam Mayor, confirming that austerity was and remains a political choice. The financial resilience of local government is becoming increasingly difficult, given the tightening of the funding position. Indeed, a recent National Audit Office report indicated that there is a heightened risk of more councils over the next four years failing falling into special measures as a result of not addressing the pressure on their budgets. Madam Mayor, this is not surprising when you look at the National Audit figures, as the Leader has already mentioned. Funding to local authorities have been cut by between 2010/11 to 2017/18 by a staggering 49.1%. This is on top of the increasing demands for key services again that the Leader has alluded to, such as social care. The National Audit Office is rightly concerned that with no end in sight, that councils are coming under increasing pressure to reduce services to communities to pay for that social care requirements. They've actually stated, to quote them, 'The current trajectory for local government is towards a narrow core offer increasingly centred on social care. This is the default outcome of sustained increases in demand for social care and the tightening of resources.' Madam Mayor, the situation continues, and as good as the Leader has mentioned, it looks like it will continue for at least the next three years. There'll be continuing pressure on this council to reduce the services to communities to pay for pressures such as social care, as well as our children. To put this in context, Madam Mayor, for Sunderland, we need to remind ourselves that the impact of cuts in Sunderland has resulted in a current annual funding gap of £293,900,000 predicted by the end of March 2019. This is predicted to rise to £348.4 million over the next three years. Madam Mayor, we are determined that the dire predictions of the National Audit Office will not happen here in Sunderland, and it will continue to try and protect local services. We will continue to apply financial prudence, however, with a careful reuse of resources while being innovative and creative, and we will ensure that our medium-term financial strategy will remain robust. We'll continue to consult with our residents to ensure that resources remain that remain are linked to their priorities for the city and for their communities. The annual audit letter from the independent external auditor once again commented on how well the council has responded to the financial pressures faced upon it. It comments that we have a proven track record of strong budget management and delivering on planned budget reductions, that led also positively comments on our level of usable reserves and the flexibility they provide to manage the medium-term financial position. Whilst we are obviously pleased to be able to report on these positive aspects, there is no escaping the fact that the financial outlook remains extremely challenging. As the Leader mentioned, the latest consultation on fair funding does not suggest a positive outcome for councils such as ours. Taken together with the spending review and the government's proposals to move 75% of business retention, the 2020 haul looks set to be an even more difficult year for this council. The risk that this poses to the future of our services in a city cannot be overstated. We need this government to ensure a fair and equitable funding system which appropriately recognises need and the ability to raise income locally, and we continue to put our cares to government. Madam Mayor, the proposals set out today reflect that we have tried to limit the impact of cuts on frontline services by again maximising frontline savings and generating additional income where possible. While we are drawing on some limited one-off resources to support the budget next year, this has been done to mean one of expenditure, and so is both prudent and measured. The budget recognises that we have to provide a long-term solution to ongoing cuts in funding. We take no pleasure in proposing to raise the council tax. However, if we don't, we will need to make further service cuts to frontline services and progress further the concerns outlined by the National Audit Office. In making the decision to propose to raise the council tax, I'm reminded by the decision that the decision is supported by nearly 75% of respondents that took part in the consultation on our budget proposals, and almost one in five would have supported a leap high increase, Madam Mayor. With this in mind, Madam Mayor, I believe the revenue budget and capital programme represent the most balanced and appropriately formed possible, given a very difficult financial position with which we are faced, and will therefore fully support the proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Cabinet Secretary. The councillor for London, children, learning, and skills?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As mentioned by the Leader, we are today proposing a budget for the ninth year of austerity. It is not only Sunderland council, but councils through up and down the country that have lobbied government for more money for children and adult social care. The government have responded, but in their usual piecemeal way. Whilst the additional funding announced by the government as part of the settlement for children and adult social care is welcomed, it does not address the impact sustained austerity since 2010 has had on budgets for children's services. In the face of the continued stretched budget position, the ability to deliver high-quality services to our children in the face of rising demand and costs is exceptionally challenging. Furthermore, there is no guarantee that the additional funding will be more than one-off. I really do believe when the director of corporate services told us that it may, or thought, or maybe it was even that he hoped, it would be an annual addition, that he had his fingers crossed behind his back. Increased demand is a national problem. The National Audit Office recently highlighted that between 2010/11 and 2017/18 referrals for children's social services increased by 7%. At the same time, child protection assessments increased by 77%. In the same period, the most expensive cases where children are taken into care have risen by almost triple the rate of population growth. Between 2014 and 15 and 2017/18, the cost... Between 2014 and fifteen and 2017-18, the cost of placements has risen by more than twenty-two percent. As a result, the cost of children in care is rising to a rate that is unprecedented. Local authorities are budgeted to spend £4.2 billion on looked-after children in 2018-19, which is £350 million or nine percent more than in 2017-18. In Sunderland in recent years, the numbers of looked-after children has risen from five hundred and thirty-one in April 2017 to six hundred and five in January 2019. The Chair of the Safeguarding Board, Sir Paul Ellis, is of the firm belief that there is a causal link with poverty. You must remember that in Sunderland, in some wards, children, the rate of children living in poverty is as high as forty percent. The position in Sunderland is even more challenging at this time of rising demand. We also face difficulties in recruiting and retaining qualified social workers, which again is a national problem, but a particularly significant regional issue. A stable and high-performing workforce is the key ingredient to driving up quality whilst managing costs and demands. Steps have been taken to grow and support the TFC workforce. A new practice model to build on the strengths within families and reduce the need for statutory intervention is currently being rolled out. In finding the required savings in my portfolio area, we must be mindful of the national upward trajectory of demand and the level of improvement that it's been possible to achieve to date within our children's services and the concerns around the impact of any further austerity on vulnerable families. That said, we cannot ignore the requirement to set and deliver a sustainable budget for the future. Within my portfolio, the children's services budgets are intended to both meet the financial challenges and seek to continue to develop strong and responsive services for the children and young people of our city. And I draw council's attention to the new foster care strategy, which provides additional fees for carers who will be supported through an in-depth training to provide for those children with more complex needs, avoiding the need for the more expensive placements in specialist settings, which no matter how good can never fully replicate a caring family home. As part of the 2019-20 budget, the council will make an additional investment of £10 million in the children's services revenue budget to help meet demand and cost pressures. As mentioned earlier, this is a national issue, but in Sunderland is magnified because of low income and poverty. I am delighted that there is additional capital investment with a new replacement school plan through Willa Fields and further investment in Derwent Hill, our outdoor education and training centre. A vibrant city needs good schools with good buildings and I intend that we will continue to replace our outdated stock for good outcomes for our children and young people. Despite this additional investment in the face of rising demand and challenges in the workforce, the children's services budget for 2019-20 has along with other portfolio areas across the council an extremely challenging cost reduction target of five million, which will require innovative, sustainable and creative ways of managing costs while managing down demand. Madam Mayor, with this in mind, I would conclude by saying we will continue to manage the children's services budget to the very best of our ability and I would commend the proposals for my portfolio. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Farthing. councillor Kelly, cultural communities?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, along with other portfolio holders, we've certainly been through the wringer and I'd like to thank the staff from both the communities and the cultural elements of the council for their support in putting a proposal together, which I think is exciting, but obviously within the guidelines of the budget that we're being set. In relation to next year's budget, the proposal for community and culture arises from work undertaken over the last year aimed at strengthening the cultural offer available within the city. As a result of this work, and as my colleagues have already said, additional half a million pounds will be provided within the budget to support the events programme across the city. Additional funding to half a million pounds will also be included to each of the five area committees in order to support local community fair projects in that and to strengthen the neighbourhood plan. The budget will see cultural offer developed to meet our ambition, create a dynamic, vibrant and healthy city, as mentioned by the Leader earlier. Building on the success of 2018, we want to grow the city's reputation as an event city and strengthen the overall cultural offer. The invigorating cultural offer will see more visitors and more residents participating in cultural activities and events and help establish Sunderland as a tourist destination and will generate significant economic benefits to the city, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to say that the council, along with partners and stakeholders, will continue to build the reputation for a high-profile first-class event and a vital cultural offer. The breadth and depth of the cultural offer in Sunderland is vast. Activities range from arts libraries and music through to museums and heritage and from participation in sport to world-class spectator events. The budget therefore includes significant capital investment, focused in particular on the development of the community football clubs, Madam Mayor, which has seen a record advancement come to Sunderland and a strong relationship between ourselves, the FA and the Premier League. We continue to invest, Madam Mayor, on the Sunderland Museum Winter Gardens as a priority for our city. It is a well-respected visitor attraction within the city and regularly bats well above its weight. Madam Mayor, as my colleagues have emphasized, we are once again faced with a very challenging financial context that is becoming increasingly difficult to deliver even statutory services. However, we have worked hard to ensure there remains a vibrant and inclusive cultural wellness offer for all ages in the city and it appears that it is a city which supports the city's economic growth and regeneration. Madam Mayor, just before I conclude, I would highlight the fact that we are in the process of moving to invest in local communities and give councillors the opportunity to work with people. Under the neighbourhood management plan, there are plans in place for the neighbourhoods and the communities who come involved in a lot of the work that we're undertaking. It's no longer going to be a top-down approach, it's going to be a bottom-up approach. And I have to thank all of the area committees, particularly the area chairs, for their help and support as we've developed this plan through. With that, Madam Mayor, I would like to commend the budget proposals from the community cultural portfolio.
Thank you very much councillor Kelly. councillor Amy Wilson, environment and transport?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I would support concerns from my colleagues in relation to the significant financial challenge which this council faces as a result of the compelling impact of funding cuts and unfunded cost pressures over nine long years. This has inevitably impacted on the much-needed local services which this council provides, including those within my own environment transport portfolio. As my colleagues have said, we continue to make very difficult decisions, meaning that our ability to deliver anything beyond our basic statutory functions is becoming even more difficult. Madam Mayor, the proposals before us today have been developed to minimise the impact on frontline services as far as possible. There has been focus on maximising the commercial opportunity of services, which includes some generation from the expansion of measures in the parking plan and exploring potential wider trading opportunities. It is fair to say that the services in my portfolio have in the past suffered cuts as a result of austerity measures. However, over the past two years, the council has listened to the feedback from our residents about what is important to them and we have made significant reinvestment to support clear space services provision in order to improve outcomes for our residents. I am happy to say that once again, we are demonstrating that we listen to what they say. This budget includes an additional allocation of £300,000 on an ongoing basis to enable an improved intensive street cleaning regime within the city. In addition, my portfolio provides for more than £130 million in capital investment across the city over the next four years. This includes investment in the highways infrastructure, street lighting, coastal defences and investment in our frontline services infrastructure to enable efficient and effective delivery of services. Therefore, Madam Mayor, I support the budget proposals for the environment and transport portfolio and commend the further investment in frontline services. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Wilson. The health and social care budget, the portfolio holder is Dr Walker, will be presented by councillor Stewart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the absence of councillor Walker, who was aware at a very important national conference, will take us through the proposals for the health and social care portfolio. Firstly, I would like to set some national context in relation to adult social care. The Local Government Association recently stated that the current system of social care is unsustainable and will buckle under the weight of demand. With people living longer, increases in costs and decreases in funding, adult social care is at breaking point. Over recent years, relative to other services, councils have protected adult social care, but the scale of the overall funding picture for local government as a whole means that adult social care services alone still face a £3.6 billion funding gap by 2025 just to maintain existing standards of care, Madam Mayor, as reported in today's Daily Telegraph. The sad and likely consequences of this are more and more people are being unable to access quality and reliable care and support, which enables them to live a more independent and fulfilling life. I am of the firm opinion therefore that this is something that the government must address in its green paper on social care in the forthcoming spending review. Worriedly, the additional funding provided by government as part of this funding settlement, whilst welcome, is woefully short in plucking the gap and is not long-term or a sustainable solution to the problem. We need adequate support to get the system back on its feet rather than just another sticking plaster. Turning now to the budget proposals for health and social care, proposals arise from the work undertaken over many months to develop a service offer that meets assess need in the most cost-effective way. The proposals set out contribute to supporting an aging population with an increasing number of adults with mental health issues or more complex learning disability needs. These pressures, along with those experienced by our NHS partners, which have a direct impact on the cost of adult social care, they need to be balanced with the need to continue to deliver positive outcomes for the most vulnerable people in our city. Almost £7 million of additional funding has been provided for within the revenue budget for 2019-20. This will support investment in services, help to meet the cost of additional demand and address the impact of the national living wage on the cost of services we need to buy from social care providers. Reductions are required to support the additional investment the council is providing next year. These will be achieved by continuing to meet the needs in the most cost-effective manner, including through the use of assistive technology. Madam Mayor, I am pleased to say that this council will continue to ensure that residents receive the relevant level of care they require and that they will continue to seek to improve outcomes for the most vulnerable members of our community. It is clear that the financial position moving forward is extremely challenging and the proposals put forward today represent a balanced response to current circumstances. Madam Mayor, with that, I would commend the budget proposals for health and social care to the council.
Thank you councillor Stewart. councillor Porthouses' portfolio, housing and regeneration will be presented by councillor Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the budget proposals before council today include a significant programme of capital investment over the next four years with plans in place to invest over £61 million on a range of schemes. As a council, we are working closely with partners to deliver on our aim of making Sunderland a dynamic city with an improved employment and housing offer. We are working closely with Redchester Social Landlords to replace and increase affordable homes across Sunderland and these proposals will also see £3 million invested to return empty properties back into use. In addition, we will also develop specialist accommodation for homeless people with the most complex needs. Importantly, we are working to boost regeneration across the city from the city centre to Ayer and beyond. These are investments by Labour in the strategic development of our city, which over time will bring that all-important boost to our local economy. Madam Mayor, with that, I would like to commend the budget proposals for the housing and regeneration portfolio to council as laid out in the agenda pack. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Morgan. Next, we will deal with amendments to the budget proposals moved by the Leader. Notice has been received of proposed amendments and by now all council members should have received a copy. I would remind council that a recorded vote will be taken on each amended, on each amendment and then a single vote on the substantive motion. We will deal with the majority opposition group's amendment first. Before the motion is formally moved, I understand that councillor Oliver wishes to delete the word "by annual" and replace it with "by annual" in relation to the airshow. Councillor Oliver is on the way. Councillor Oliver, will you please move the amendment to the revenue budget by reading it out?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the motion. Did you read it out? Sorry, yes, of course, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I can assure you it adds up even if the English was a little bit iffy, so. We propose savings reductions and revenue transfer of £2.02 million. I'll set out in more detail in my speech later exactly how, but the motion reads as follows: to delete £10,000 meals after full council meetings for councillors, to delete £171,000 from the members' allowances budget, to delete, sorry, to delete £180,000 from the trade union facility time, to delete £50,000 from contingencies in relation to the Spice Girls concert, to delete £9,000 from advertising in Community Vibe magazine, to delete £507,000 for the airshow this year, to delete £500,000 from the increase in the area committee's budget, to increase revenue from the enforcement of litter, fly-tipping and dog fowling fines by £100,000 and to increase parking revenue by £303,000 and then to transfer from the general reserves of £170,000. That therefore, Madam Mayor, will come to £101,900,000 to limit the council tax rise to 1.99% and also leave £120,000 with which we propose to create five park warden posts. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Francis, your second motion? Councillor Oliver, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the Conservative group is the only group on the council that is seeking to reduce the amount of rise in the council tax. In fact, we will cut the proposed council tax rise of the Labour group in half, returning £27 a year to the band D property council taxpayers. Madam Mayor, whilst we accept that the social care precept and one percent of the rise is necessary, we feel that the rest of it is an unnecessary tax rise and it is better to return it to the hard-pressed taxpayers of the city. Therefore, we are focused on cutting waste and raising more revenue. As for the specific items, the first one, we would delete the £10,000 budget for meals after council meetings for councillors. Now, of course, we've already had this out and I'm sure councillor Miller would have been absolutely delighted with the heading in the Echo the next day that said scoffing. I'm not sure if it was scoffing as in eating stuff or scoffing at the taxpayer to the tune of £10,000. But we have already had a debate on that. These meals, actually, I didn't realise, do come to £10 each for each councillor, so it's not exactly, not exactly cheap. But, you know, as I'll make the point later, we really can't have the Labour councillors saying everything's got to be cut to the bone. There isn't a penny for everything, but there's £10,000 to feed the councillors after meetings. It really doesn't add up. The second thing is we will we will reduce members' allowances budget. The members' allowances budget comes to more than a million pounds every year. We propose cuts which we have given to the remuneration panel and do include cuts to Conservative councillors' allowances as well, of course. We would remove twenty-five percent from all leadership roles, fifty percent from committee chairs and a hundred percent from the policy assistance. And that would trim in, we feel, the worst excesses of the councillors' allowances scheme. I think in sympathy really with what a lot of the people in the city think, that we should be sharing in the reductions to the council's budget. We would also reduce the trade union facility time. The trade union facility time budget is, of course, £210,000 this year. Now, as a trade union member myself, I'm very much in favour of the reasonable time that trade union representatives get off to fulfil their duties. But it is, of course, a link between the trade union facility time of the council and the money that the said unions give to the Labour Party. What goes around, comes around. So really, we would reduce it to what we think is a reasonable level, to leave actually £30,000 in that budget, which is enough for one full-time member of staff to be a full-time trade union representative. We were, of course, We were of course told many years ago that the trade union facility time budget would reduce, as the need was less, it would reduce, but that never has really happened and I think possibly giving rise to some suspicions about the relationship between the council, the councillors and the trade union, some of the councillors of course sponsored by those trade unions. Next, we would...
I think that's defamatory, Madam Mayor. I think it should be taken back.
I'll defer to your advice and withdraw that comment. Okay. Maybe I should explain it in more careful detail, but we'll move on. We would delete from contingencies £50,000 which is of course a Spice Girls concert. Now, I know councillor Miller is getting a reputation for when he's in a hole to get his spade out and dig a bit further. I can't quite believe that you would go to the press and try and defend this yourself, but again, it's another thing that we've had out in the past, so I thought instead, I spent this morning looking at Spice Girls lyrics and I found three of the, I found three of the most appropriate Spice Girls songs to sum up why we should delete the £50,000. They are, they have, apparently, I've not heard of these songs actually, but I also read that apparently the Spice Girls were very linked to Tony Blair and Cool Britannia in the 1990s. That's another reason for cutting the money from them. But, well, I'm not saying them, I'll spare you that. One of their songs was called 'Denying', well, I think we deny the reality of giving money to sponsor, to support a concert really, that could very, very easily have found the money somewhere else from the football club or from the price of the ticket. So councillor Miller is in denial. The second one, they also had a song called 'Never Give Up On The Good Times' and I think when they come to Sunderland council, that's what they'll be singing because no other council in the country has decided to sponsor them. And finally, they also had a song called 'Right Back At You' and I think councillor Miller might find the backlash a little bit later when the council taxpayers find out that they are paying for this. And next, we would delete advertising in Community Vibe. We all know that we used to have these magazines that were little more than town hall pravders full of smiling Labour councillors just up for re-election. It's now morphed into buying a few pages of council Community Vibe, the same sort of problem really and essentially, you know, if you want to do that, if you want to advertise and get yourselves re-elected, then pay for it yourselves from your own political funds. I remember the former MP, Chris Mullin of course, he never took his £10,000 communication allowance. He never spent it because he felt it was wrong and he felt that if he wanted to advertise and put out leaflets, then the Labour Party could fund that themselves. So how times have changed. Next one, we would delete the funding for the airshow. Now, this is peering in the papers today. I need to make it clear, what we would do is we would delete the funding for the airshow. We would not delete the airshow, you can have the airshow if you want, though there was, I did pick up quite a little bit of negativity in the big survey the council did with residents about it. We're all in favour of airshows, whether they occur once a year, once every two years or even twice a year, but I don't think we get the red hours that often. But of course, the point is here, yes, pump prime these events, get them going, but years and years later, decades later, really that should have moved on and that should be paying for itself through sponsorship or through the revenue of it. And it's about time that that happened, it's about time that we did more to get more sponsorship in so that these are not a drain on the council tax. Yes, of course, we welcome the money that comes in for business, but it shouldn't be always coming back to the council taxpayer. Next, we would delete the increase in the area committee's budget, a very large increase whilst proposed, half a million pounds for the area budgets. I think councillor Dixon will talk later about this, so I won't say too much, but essentially we would be pleased with the budget as it is, it's not a cut, we're just not agreeing to your half a million pound extra for that. Next, we would raise revenue by £100,000 for enforcement. Now, that would mean we would probably need about 1,000 fines every year. Now, that I think is a reasonable prospect. In Newcastle, they have, I think, about 3,000 or 4,000 fines every year and it brings in a lot of money. Last year, we had one fine for dog fouling, 14 fines for littering and 35 fines for fly tipping. So still, despite increased efforts and despite more people, we are still way behind, so our ambition would be to get fines into four figures next year and therefore bringing in £100,000 in revenue. We would increase parking revenue as well and councillor Wood is going to speak on that in a second. We would also finally take £170,000 from the general reserve. Now, councillor Miller says you can't, you know, rely on the reserves, okay, fine, you spend it, it's spent. I would notice that, I think several years ago, our general reserves were already about £7 million and now about £12 million. And I think the general public will say, hang on a minute, £12 million in your general reserves and you're talking as if we haven't got two pennies to rub together. So I think it's perfectly fair to take actually what is a very, very small amount and reduce those general reserves to support services. With that, of course, we will be able to cut Labour's proposed council tax rise in half, return the money to the people who want it instead of it being wasted and also we would fund five park wardens across the city that councillor Mullin is going to talk about in a minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Oliver. Does anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Wood, councillor Morning, councillor Hodgson, councillor Kelly, councillor Stewart, councillor McKnight. Councillor Dixon, did you indicate you wanted to speak?
As councillor Oliver suggested, that's for Labour. Glad you know what you're doing, ladies.
All right, councillor Wood, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder if I could begin by asking a question, Madam Mayor. I don't think we're required to give notice of questions, are we at these meetings? I just wonder if we could tell me why councillor Porthouse isn't present this evening, for example. Councillor Walker's absence was explained when another colleague of his presented his budget, but there's been no explanation for councillor Porthouse not being here. I'm not sure whether he's joined the Tiggers, the independent group, but I'm sure some of the views he expresses are perhaps fairly close to theirs, although they might even have been suspended from the other side, Madam Mayor, but I think we're entitled to know. Anyway.
Councillor Wood, I don't know, I've put apologies in and I know more than that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to refer, I think really, to page 289 of the estimates that we have tonight, insofar as one can refer to a page these days, and it's reference 11, I suppose, line 11, the reference to parking services there, which shows that during the current financial year, a surplus of £999,000 was made and next year we're expecting a surplus of £1,200,000. Now, that increase is welcome certainly, but I think there are other issues that we need to take on board. So clearly I'm supporting the amendment this evening, Madam Mayor, because I believe in keeping taxes down as much as possible and limiting council tax, the increase in council tax to 2% rather than 4%, for example, is clearly, I think, in keeping with that belief. And I've indicated already that I want particularly to speak in support of increasing the revenue that the council receives from parking services. I welcome certainly that after many deficit years, many deficit years, Madam Mayor, we're now in modest surplus, but other cities and towns are still earning, still able to earn higher surpluses and of course, you don't do that by driving parking charges ever upwards. I share, Madam Mayor, I think my colleagues share, the view of the city's civic society which about 18 months ago undertook a survey of city car parking usage and it found that the main city centre car parks are significantly underused even at weekends and it recommended a simpler, more attractive parking charges policy, a simpler, more attractive pricing structure for car parking charges. Now certainly, I would keep the free after three on Thursdays approach, but I would commend two other examples of parking charges, one in Sunderland and one elsewhere. If we look at Cowan Terrace in St Michael's Ward, Madam Mayor, the ward of councillor Dixon, councillor Oliver, I represent, if we look at the car park in Cowan Terrace, clear notice there indicates it's a pound an hour and £3 for 24 hours, that's the maximum. So it's simple, seems to me the charges are reasonable and that car park, Madam Mayor, is regularly full, certainly was this morning. And the other example I like to quote is of South Shields on the seafront where it's a penny for the first, a penny a minute for the first 10 minutes and then a pound to park all day. Now that also seems to be simple, clear and nobody, I think, could object really to such reasonable charges. But in our car parks, on the other hand, prices are really all over the place, they vary from car park to car park, somewhere below a pound an hour, 80 pence, 90 pence, for example, others are above, £1.10, £1.30 an hour and all involve more complex calculations than for example in South Shields or Cowan Terrace, as I mentioned. And sometimes in some of the car parks, the charges apply on Sundays and bank holidays and sometimes they don't. There's no consistency, Madam Mayor, and I think you need it if you're going to encourage people to come into the city on a regular basis, use our car parks and patronise our businesses. Now, with simpler, a simpler pricing structure, I do believe that we would make car parking in Sunderland a more attractive proposition and I believe increased numbers of motorists and of course their passengers as well because they probably won't simply come alone, more motorists, more passengers will come into the city, increasing revenues for both the council and the car parking and also businesses of course in the shops, the restaurants and whatever. It would be a win-win situation, I think, for all. And perhaps I can also make this comment, Madam Mayor, relates to car parks, that I think lifts and other facilities in the car parks also need to be reliable. The lift at the Sunnyside multi-storey car park, for example, I think are twinned with the railway station escalator. When my family and I go to the cinema, we park the car in the car park, we look out through the lift not working notices and we're rarely disappointed, we're rarely disappointed. So that will be taken as well. Now, cheaper and simpler pricing structures don't necessarily mean less revenue. People will see that as better value and it will encourage use, increasing revenue in the process because it's a much more user friendly approach. I'd like to support the amendment, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wood. Councillor Mullin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been asked to speak about cemeteries, which I'm not going to read too much into. The Conservatives are proposing to delete the rise in area committee money to reinstate five park and cemetery wardens each costing £24,000 per year. These wardens would have responsibility for parks and cemeteries across the city, including locking them at night and opening them on morning thereby keeping out people who wish to do them harm during the night. They would also play a part in helping the council to be more proactive in issuing dog fouling penalties, particularly since, as councillor Oliver said, the council has only issued one in the last year. In Barnes Park last year, just days before the West Area meeting event, a gang of teenagers actually ripped the railings from Barnes Park's ban stand and used them as swords, intimidating several members of the public. And similarly, the Conservative candidate for St Peters this year has recently spoken to residents about their concerns following an arson incident in Rooker Park and they feel equally strongly about securing their park as some Barnes residents do. Aside from the parks, though, I think there was a gasp of surprise over the other side. I'm especially pleased that my Conservative colleagues supported the idea that these wardens should also have cemeteries included in their remit. Like most people, I feel a general sense, Madam Mayor, of frustration when inconsiderate people use cemeteries for things like dog walking and Bishop Boyer Mav's cemetery is used for drivers to get easy access to Chester Road, but far worse than this was in 2017 when the children's cemetery in Bishop Boyer Mav was vandalised including with a motorbike driving over several of the graves. Madam Mayor, I have a brother who was buried in that cemetery and I don't know if anyone has ever experienced the dread of approaching a child's grave, wondering whether or not it's been desecrated, but it's a unique and uniquely awful feeling. When we got there, it fortunately hadn't, but a grave next to it which has a baby girl in it who her parents have not actually visited the grave in the two and a half decades that she's been buried there, her grave had been destroyed and had clear imprints of a motorbike's tyre in it and it had pulled apart what was already a very modest grave. While I'm not entirely hopeful that this amendment will pass, Madam Mayor, I will support it and I hope that the council leader will consider what I've outlined here for something in a future budget because people do feel very strongly, particularly surrounding the damage and misuse of the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mullin. Councillor Hodgson?
Thank you, Mayor Sunderland. Listening to Robert outline the Conservative budget amendment, there are some aspects of it which feel very familiar and certainly give me a sort of sense of déjà vu of Lib Dem proposals in the last couple of years. I just wish that the Conservatives had spoken up about their concerns about free meals, members allowances, Spice Girls concerts, Vibe magazine, area committees beforehand and in committees when it might have helped, but they can rest assured that there is plenty of room on our court tails. We, there are a couple of things that have come up in this meeting so far that have caught my attention. I was, from used to hear Graham Miller say that criticised the opposition groups for making some small use of the reserves, especially when on page 152 of our budget book, the Labour council is making a one off use of its reserves, actually quite a substantial one of 1.25 million. You know, there is good reason for us to be using reserves when it can be done sensibly and without a long term impact. Likewise, actually, I share, it wouldn't surprise anyone here, I share Rob Lord's concerns about the way the allowances, particularly the special responsibility allowances have been abused at this council. Indeed, it's been disappointing in this meeting that two portfolio holders are not here and yet their two deputies are unable to deputise for them. It makes you wonder exactly what we're paying you for, at which point I have to say that I am willing to support the Conservative amendment, I believe the Lib Dem group will as well, that we do have reservations actually about the trade union facility time in particular, but we do recognise that in principle this is, broadly speaking, an attempt to address council spending and shift a saving to the residents of the city. So even if we can't, even if we do disagree with the way they've gone about it, we can't argue with the spirit. So we'll be supporting the amendment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hodgson. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, you might be surprised to hear I'm speaking against this amendment based on the fact that it has no reality about whatsoever. Delete meal allowance £10,000, I'm not too sure it is the full £10,000, I'd be more impressed if the Conservatives had sort of said that a few weeks ago and stood by and didn't go in for a meal after the vote, then that would be much better. Reduce members allowances.
Point of personal explanation.
Yes, councillor Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may make a point of personal explanation, since the amendment that we put down on the meals after council meetings, Conservative councillors pay for their own meals and if they go into the restaurant tonight, that's what they've, that's what they will do. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you for that explanation, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I won't withdraw because you've done it for many, many years, councillor, so don't start. Right, we'll move on to the next one, reduction of members allowances. It's a long, long time before since there was any increase in members' allowance, but I think the Conservative group actually made the Labour group in accepting the portion of the representation that came through the committee. There has been absolutely nothing stopping you the entire time, you handing back your allowances and the same goes for the Labour Democrats, they could have actually handed their allowances back at any particular time they chose to. You haven't done that. Reduce trade union facility time. Madam Mayor, we have been through such a turmoil and the reality is all... Madam Mayor, we have been through such a turmoil and the reality is, almost, I think it's the 3,000, 3,500 staff have gone.
I have seven.
Sorry, seven, 7,000 members of staff have gone. That has involved a heck of a lot of trade union time and work for people to try and keep them as safe as we can, get them across the line, try and find them new jobs. Delete from the contingent of the Spice Girls concert, Madam Mayor. That is paid by numerous councils across the spectrum and they appear by things. Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I demand an apology from councillor Oliver, apology again, according to a lie, Madam Mayor.
I'm giving apology, he's not giving one to a problem. There you go. Solidarity.
Right, councillor Brian, please talk to councillor Kelly and I. The Spice Girls and other councillors do sponsor the events. So let's set it out and carry on.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, that twice now has called a colleague of mine a liar and she admitted that completely unacceptably, you should be prepared to the judge.
Right, we'll carry on, no more comments like that, councillor.
Okay, thank you again, Madam Mayor. So, Spice Girls, it's an income generator, there are lots of people employed by Stadium of Light, there are people around the area that will transport a tonne from the area, it will generate an income. Delete advertising the community vibe, councillor Oliver said it's an opportunity for Labour councillors to get their face in there prior to election. Madam Mayor, Tory councillors try doing something and working with the public, you can be facing the paper. It isn't a political one, it's about good news stories from councillors who work with their communities. That's all I can say on that one. Delete the airshow and I'll accept the amendment. Madam Mayor, £507,000, it's actually cost a lot more than that to put the airshow on and we recoup a heck of a lot of the costs through opportunities through catering and hospitality which we sell and try to do it that way. We've looked at people coming in sponsoring, it's a huge area to do. Due austerity, there's been a little bit less sponsorship about, so we're being unsuccessful in that. However, we have taken away a number of things from the airshow and in fact, Madam Mayor, I think you were there when we were there last year, once we started charging councillors, I didn't see any Conservatives turn up that year, so I could have been wrong on that one, maybe missed them, but when we started charging, they stopped coming. Delete the increase in the area committee budgets. This just goes to show how narrow-minded we are. The area budget is designed so that councillors from all sides can work with their communities. It's designed to help them help their communities with projects that they need to go across the line. I'm particularly proud that we have put an extra £500,000 into the area committees, Madam Mayor, because I think this will work with some of the weakest groups we've got in the city and I think it gives the councillors an opportunity to work with those groups and to support them and again, very, very supportive of the area committees, Madam Mayor. Increase revenue from enforcement flights, now we've got to buy a lottery ticket now, shall we? Because we've got no guarantees on that, it's an aspirational figure and what that actually means is bring people in who are going to jump on you from a grey hat and not take any explanation, so a child in the air drops a swing wrapper, some hairy bloke from the enforcement agency will come out and they'll get the £80 fine on the child. Do you know, so that's it. Increase parking revenue, I've been confused by that one because from one sense it's something like councillors saying they're down, they're fixed pricing, or as long as you want to increase the parking revenue, but it doesn't work both ways. General reserves, Madam Mayor, yes, there has been slightly increasing general reserves. But general reserves are those that have money coming in from government for specific projects and don't necessarily, they're just supposed to play with. So with that reason, Madam Mayor, I'll be opposing this amendment.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the first couple of words from councillor Oliver sort of reminded us of, it's the same old story from the Conservatives, cutting waste was the first two words that he spoke when he raised these proposals in his budget. Madam Mayor, I need to remind him that this council has lost £293.9 million annually from its budget. I don't think there's any waste left, Madam Mayor. But in relation to some of the specific items, if we first of all deal with the meals issue, this was raised, I think it was just five weeks ago, Madam Mayor, and a democratic decision was made in this council and it's quite clear that councillor Oliver and his colleagues don't believe in democracy and I'm quite sure we'll get this next month and a month after the month after that, if that's their view on democracy. I think it's right that members, after a hard day's at work, have the opportunity for a meal 10 times a year, that's not excessive. In relation to reducing members' allowances, Madam Mayor, I think the Tories are quite similar to the Liberal Democrats when it comes to this in that consistently nationally, when they're in opposition, they oppose the introduction or an expansion, an increase of members' allowances, but when they get into power, they suddenly change their minds. And there was an example recently, in the last few days, Redditch Borough Council, where for years they'd been opposing increases in such allowances, but as soon as they got in, they gave themselves a 300% peer rise. And, well, that was overall, after the leader didn't quite get that, the leader, Mike Dormer, only got a upping 150% peer rise and that's him there with his smiley little face, very happy with his peer rise, Madam Mayor. Another example, again, of what happens when the Conservatives get into power, Madam Mayor, is Basleton. Basleton, again, the Tories there were in opposition, raised issues about the cost of allowances, but as soon as they got into power, they suddenly decided to increase the number of special responsibility allowances so they could give their friends in their party jobs to do, that paid a lot of money. Thank you. In relation to current opposition here, and long may they remain the opposition, thank you very much, is that, I suppose the proof is what they are currently doing presently yet, they do believe fundamentally that allowances are wrong or allowances are too high. Do they give up their allowances? No. Do they give up part of their allowances? No. So there's no real principle here, it's a case of just electoral opportunism. In relation to the trade union facility time, Madam Mayor, once again, this is another usual trick of the Conservatives to attack trade unions. Reminds me of the attempts when the Conservatives put the trade union act through Parliament. A lot of what councillor Oliver's proposing was originally in that bill, but because of opposition in Parliament had to be taken out, but clearly the Conservatives have changed their view with regards to their anti-trade union views. But finally, can I link the airshow, the Spice Girls and the parking proposals together, Madam Mayor? Take the annual airshow, Madam Mayor, this is the highlight of the summer, it's a free weekend carnival, stalls, rides and of course, the old plane even does with pie when it's not raining, but it's a family day out and I look forward to that and it's something that the Tories want to take away because the reality is, if you take the funding away, you take the airshow away, that is the reality. Madam Mayor, the other point of this is that they put Sunderland not just on the map nationally but internationally and brings billions of pounds from visitors to our shops, to our pubs and to our hotels in the city. As for the Spice Girls, I see nothing wrong in the council helping to facilitate major concerts. Bringing such acts such as the Spice Girls to Sunderland is something to shout about. I don't know if there's a song in that somewhere, but never mind. Okay. Anyway, I know my daughter can't stop shouting about it. And that's the problems with the Tories, Madam Mayor, it's true, they all say that they know the cost of everything but the value of nothing. We should be pressing the council and the leader on how we can facilitate more such events so that the residents of our city can see major international bands rather than always having to trail through to Newcastle, or is that actually what the Conservatives and the Tories want us to do, Madam Mayor? The cost will be made again by the income that the city will generate from the visitors, Madam Mayor. And finally, the car parking. After moving the smile away from my daughter regarding the Spice Girls and, to be honest, the smile away from my grandchildren by stopping the airshow, they want to, I'm not quite sure what they want to do with the car parking charges, I don't know whether they're going to increase them, reduce them or what, I think there's a lot of confusion over there. I think that clear confusion is going to upset my better half in relation to her use of the car when she's parking, so that's going to make me a grumpy individual and a grumpy portfolio with that. And it's quite clear that the Conservatives just want to have a grumpy city to deal with. Madam Mayor, their proposals might be simply taking the sun out of Sunderland for all the joy that they will be removing from this city by their proposals. I could certainly see with the car parking proposals that there's going to be a few leaflets in the next few weeks, but their colour will be a deep shade of red rather than a pale blue with regards to what your proposals are for car parking. Finally, they propose to use the savings to prioritise a reduction in council tax and I think what a cheek to make that suggestion. No doubt it'll make a headline and no doubt it will be in your leaflets, but I think we need to remind ourselves, the reason the council tax has to go up is the current funding gap of this council. Money that the Liberal Democrats and Conservatives have stolen from this city to fund tax cuts for their friends in big business, and again, £293.9 million. That is £293.9 million annually needed to bring services back to the levels we enjoyed in 2010 and reduce the charges back to the levels they were in 2010. Madam Mayor, we can all play with statistics and that's what the Conservatives and the Tories are doing here with their proposals. The council tax raises £92.5 million. The government funding gap that they've stolen from us is £293.9 million. Clearly one is bigger than the other and I let them do their math. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well said. Thank you very much, councillor Stewart. Councillor McKnight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you point out, I will not be supporting this amendment. Councillor Oliver described his proposals as cutting waste. I'm sure the employees of this council will not regard the council union representatives' facility time as waste, I'm almost certain of that. One paid union member for, how many are with this, Michael? 3,000 employees?
Roughly.
Roughly. One paid union representative for 3,000 employees. Really? Is that, is that logical? Is that sensible? This is just an example again of the Conservatives' breathtaking contempt for our workforce and working people. It's just ingrained. They're attempting to hamstring the ability of unions to represent our staff, staff when they're at their most vulnerable and when they're at their lowest rate. I've been there, I've been there when I needed representation from a union representative and I tell you what they are at God's sake. And actually saying to people, actually we should be cutting back on this? Facility time, of course, is protected by law. Reps are entitled to reasonable paid time off. I'll just repeat that, paid time off, to do their union duties and their responsibilities. As specified in the legislation around this is the Trade Union and Labour Consolidation Act 1992, sections 168 and 170, and the Employment Act 2002, section 43, and in current ECAS guidance. Deleting this from our budget proposal could potentially mean we're breaking the law and a prepared accounting statute. We need to make sure that our staff are adequately represented, it's a basic right. So I'll just keep it short and brief, Madam Mayor, that was the main point I just wanted to make, but just one other thing to finish. On councillor Oliver's guilty secret about the Spice Girls and their lyrics and their songs, I'd just like to conclude. The way the two parties work at the minute with, obviously with the collusion, it's kind of went to become one. These morbid politicians should just stop. So just to close, this is a simply, completely morbid gimmick and it's only contempt, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKnight. Councillor Francis, you reserve the right to speak, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'll try to hold this page, it's on the top two pages. I'll attempt to be brief, Madam Mayor. This is a good, sound amendment, one worthy of serious consideration this evening and hopefully adoption by this council. The majority of people in Sunderland will, I am sure, give it their approval as it seeks to reduce the increase in council tax without reducing services. Indeed, it seeks to improve some services. This will make people happy, not grumpy. I draw council's attention to four laudable points, all worthy of our unanimous approval. No public service will be reduced. The council tax increase proposed by Labour is reduced to a more manageable level. It demonstrates to the electorate that elected members are prepared to take a hit in their pockets and it seeks to make Sunderland a safer place by reintroducing park wardens. Let's look at that third point dealing with the reduction in money received by councillors. Recent letters in the Sunderland Echo, comments made on the doorstep and raised at ward surgery show that there is a wish among the electorate for councillors to demonstrate by way of a reduction in the number of paid posts and in allowances, that they are willing to make a contribution to the savings that they, the electorate, are hoping to make. So, the council group is leading from the front on this one by not receiving one of its SRAs to which it is entitled, but is still doing the work it entails. And I especially recommend this part of the amendment to the chamber. I hope that councillors Kelly and Stewart will know what we're doing. Some here this evening have objected to the reduction in trade union funding, perhaps arguing that we are against trade unions. To the best of my knowledge, all of this bench who have enjoyed long-term employment have belonged either to trade unions or professional societies, so we are not anti-workers collectors, just the opposite. I was a member of two unions as I moved, two associations as I moved along the Lice Highway. We do, however, believe that a union or society member should fund their representatives once the legal requirements have been met. So I ask the question of Labour, why should those on state pension or any pension or unable to work or not members of the unions concerned pay towards their upkeep? This very point was put to me this morning by several now-retired former trade union We support the deletion of the proposed £50,000 to support the Spice Girls concert at the Stadium of Light. Two such commercial concerns should not benefit from public funds, we believe that they should be self-funded. After all, Mrs Canibody's corner shop has to pay its way in spite of the rent increases imposed by Siglin. Again, those same pensioners were objecting to this £50,000 just this morning. So I remind council that council taxpayers in Sunderland will benefit if this amendment is adopted this evening, so I recommend it to the members and ask for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Leader, do you wish to reply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. I feel that I have no option but to reply. Thank you, councillor McKnight, for stealing my went to become ones line, you'll be punished later for that, but I'm just going to go through the items as laid out in councillor Oliver's amendment. On deleting meals after full council meetings, I've made my position on this very clear. Eight meetings a year, which can go on to quite some time, and I think it's absolutely right this council supplies a warm meal or a cold meal, if that is what they want, to our staff, our guests and our councillors, especially those that come straight from work. Some of us do bring a packed lunch, as I pointed
Some of us do bring a packed lunch, as I pointed out to Councillor Lyon at the last meeting when we debated this, but not everybody can do that for the whole day. This is, as I said to the media all day, just the worst example of pork barrel politics where people are looking to take away from the real issue, which is the Liberal Democrats and the Conservatives' coalition stand on austerity, which has cost this city nearly £300 million. So let's not talk about that. Let's talk about £5,000 on food for eight council meetings a year. And it is a warm meal. The constant inflating of it to be an all-you-can-eat buffet with the inference of what goes with that is is just shameful, to be honest. So I will not be agreeing with that and I do not, we visited it five weeks ago, I'll not be supporting it. We're not doing it. Reduced members allowance issue. The councillors in this council have not had a rise in their basic allowance or in their special responsibility allowances for seven years. Staff have had rises, not very big ones, but the staff in this council have had rises. Councillors consistently in this chamber have year on year voted not to take a rise. So I have to disagree with you, Councillor Francis. We elected members have taken a hit in our pocket because in real terms, all of us have seen an 18% reduction in the value of our allowance and any special responsibility allowances that we get, which we get because we're doing extra work. I have to remind everybody, councillors in this chamber, none of us decide what that value for that allowance or what those special responsibility allowances are. That is determined by the independent remuneration panel who every year talk to councillors, find out what councillors think they should be having, and every year they say we should take a rise. And they determine what that rise should be, and they determine what the value should be, and they determine that based on the work that they see. Area committee chairs, cabinet deputies, not policy assistants, Councillor Oliver, what they do. And it's their decision on the value of that allowance. It's got nothing to do with the Labour Party. It's got nothing to do with the Conservative Party or the Liberal Democrats. We have no say in the matter of what allowances are paid to councillors. And every year, we refuse it. Because we have decided that we will not take any extra money whilst austerity is impacting on this council and the residents of this city. And as I've said, because of that, we've taken an 18% reduction in the spending power of that money. So I utterly disregard the reduced members allowance argument because it's being done for political reasons. It's poorly about saying to people, oh yes, we don't agree with Labour, they're the people keeping paying the allowances to themselves. Well, everybody in this chamber who gets an allowance is paying it to themselves. But we don't make the decision. And as I've said, I've got no doubt the independent remuneration panel report, when it comes out next month, will advocate either a rise or a no-change position, and we will agree whatever they tell us. Because we don't disagree with them. It's their decision. Trade union facility time. We've lost 5,000 staff from within the council, more than that if you take into account education. But we still have nearly 3,000 staff in play. And it is a legal duty, as Councillor MacNait pointed out, that we must offer sensible facility time to staff to enable their union duties, to support staff with employment issues. It's as simple as that. This is an annual scenario for the Conservatives. It is a cheap marker for them to be going on about, but I genuinely wish, gentlemen, that you would stop it. We are talking about denying support to workers. If our staff need support because the council has treated them badly, I want to know that they've got the broadest spectrum of trade union support to go to to enable them to be represented. And that is what trade union facility time is about. That and unfortunately helping people, the thousands of people that we've lost over the last nine years, leave this council because of your government's policies of austerity, which has lost us nearly £300 million. The Spice Girls. It's like it just keeps giving. Honestly, Robert, it just... I can be honestly quite frank with you, Councillor Francis. If we had not given £50,000 to the football club, not the Spice Girls, the Spice Girls concert would not be happening. They did not have the money available to enable the work that they needed to do with partners to bring that concert to this city in June of this year. Now, we gave that money as an investment. And if we do generate £4 million over that weekend because of the spend that 50,000-plus people coming to the Stadium of Light, staying on a Friday and a Saturday, spending in our pubs, clubs, restaurants, cafes, getting in local taxis, going to local shops, doing whatever it is they're doing, that will be an £80 income for every pound spent. Now, I genuinely cannot think of a better rate of return I've ever heard in my life than that, which will be beneficial to the residents of Sunderland. And I have to tell you, you're quite wrong. I don't know who you were speaking to, Councillor Francis, but I'll just use the Echo Online polls. When they did one and over 2,000 people took part in it, 87% of the residents of Sunderland could not wait for the Spice Girls to come back. So you're very out of touch with the public you supposedly represent, gentlemen. And if Councillor Linder was here, I would say ladies and gentlemen, but she is absent unfortunately tonight. Now, before I go on, just to put it in context, councillor Ben, the mayor Ben Houchen in Tees Valley Combined Authority, and fair play to him, but he has spent £350,000 bringing the big weekend to Middlesbrough. And do you know what? You've got to applaud him for that. Because he's doing the job of trying to lift Middlesbrough and the Tees Valley area. Now, I think that that money's well spent because he's looking out for the residents of the area he represents, but that is real money, £50,000 by comparison. So it's okay for you to complain about this city having aspirations to do things for its residents, right? But we'll not talk about what the Tory mayor down in Tees Valley is doing. You know, let's be fair, I think he's doing the right thing because he thinks that's the right thing and I think we are doing the right thing by bringing this event here because we do want Sunderland to be an event city. We do want people to be coming here because we can put events on, keep people safe, make them happy and they want to come back, spend money, live, work and play here. Delete advertising in community vibe. I'm only going to say that if Conservative councillors did the work that Labour councillors did on the ground to produce good news stories, they would not be complaining about the fact that good news stories are going into the vibe without mentioning Labour councillors, but showing Labour councillors, because we are the ones doing the work. And if you don't like it, get off your behind and get into your community and do some work and send a good news story in and it will be included in community vibe because it's not, as you refer to it in the past, Councillor Oliver, Town Hall Pravda. It's about letting people see, because our residents have told us, we don't tell them what we're doing. They've told us that we're not good enough at making them aware of what we're trying to put on and the events and the support that we give them. And that is what community vibe is about. And I think £9,000 is incredibly good value and it's open to every councillor in this chamber to get benefit out of. So please avail yourself of the facility. Unlike leaflets that go out as we get close to election time, we are getting close to one, funnily enough. Surprising what's in the budget tonight. Vibe goes out four times a year, you know, so the message is consistent. I genuinely think you need to be looking at why you're not in it, Robert, rather than complaining about the fact that I've given the option out there for councillors to get engaged in it.
Madam Mayor, I move an exception for the lady to conclude his remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The airshow, genuinely, please, please keep saying things like this because you'll end up with no Tory councillors in Sunderland. So I applaud you for bringing it. But you should check the Echo Online poll tonight. 67% of residents want the airshow, right? You're so out of touch with the people that you propose, you suggest that you represent, right? And I checked it before I came in this chamber, right? The airshow is the best free airshow in Europe. And officers hate me saying that, but I believe that's what it is. We get between £500,000 and £600,000 people over the weekend coming in and having a great time. Now, some of these people cannot afford a holiday. These are, some of these people are unemployed, low-wage, but they're able to get, if the weather's nice, a lovely weekend down at Seaborn and Roker with a great event going around them. I think if we did not strive to deliver that as a council, we would be letting the residents of this city in. So we will be absolutely not agreeing on that amendment. Councillor Kelly has pointed out that we do try and we haven't got sponsorship. But sponsors have been increasingly difficult to find after nine years of austerity, funnily enough. So it leaves us with a shortfall which this council pays for because that is part and parcel of good governance for the residents of the city, I'm afraid. If we're going to be a vibrant city, an event city and a destination city, the biggest airshow in Europe is something that we have to support. And as Councillor Stewart said, all you're about is taking the fun out of Sunderland. And that's great. I'm going to use that as a strapline for you all going forward. Right? Take the fun out of Sunderland. That's what the Tories are about at the end of the day. I am very disappointed in your comments about the area committee budget. You know, the one thing that I've always been very, very committed to is trying to ensure that local councillors, as frontline councillors, ward leaders, have access to funds locally to enable them to deliver projects from out there, not central, that enables them to do their job better. And once again, it's open to Conservative councillors, Liberal Democrat councillors, Labour councillors. It's there to be used. Now, this is something I'm told everybody wants. So we're trying to ensure that we're delivering a better package of service to the people, as I said, that we are elected to represent. The Labour Group is committed to supporting our local communities and allowing them to make decisions about their own areas. And that is why this increased element of funding is happening. And if you don't like it, fine, we will take the plaudits for it, we will take the glory for it and you will pay the price for it, Councillor Oliver. Exactly. Increased revenue from enforcement of litter, fly-tipping and dog fouling. It's unprovable to go from £9,000 a year to £100,000 a year, gentlemen. Is that net? Is that £100,000 net? Is that, is that after the cost of the enforcement officers that we need? Because currently, that is a question mark I have here. And we should be doing more fines, but this council's tried to be fair. We've tried to basically educate people. And I'm sure Councillor Wiltshire has said this many times before in this chamber, we have tried to educate people to realise that don't do it. And we've moved to enforcement and that's what we're going with it now. But to go from £9,000 to £100,000, quite frankly, a laughable increase, Councillor Oliver, which I'm sure you're aware. And it's the same with the parking revenue. And honestly, I'm not quite sure which Conservative councillor to talk to about this because you flip-flop more than a beach cod on this. You're either talking about, you're not as, you're not as cheap as Newcastle, oh, you're too, you're too cheap. We want it free, we don't want it free. And then you realise, well, we're actually making 1.2 million projected surplus which we feed back into parking and everything within the budget for the council, right? We've got the best value, we've got the cheapest parking offer in the region. It is the country councillor, Morden, in the country, right? And here you are, wanting to raise our parking charges to stop people coming into the city centre because that's what it'll do, which will damage us economically when we're trying to fix the city centre by bringing people into it. So we'll not be agreeing with your proposals about parking charges because as revenue charges go, it's a ridiculous concept. We have gone up and down over the years and we're now in a position where we are making a return. And I think we've probably just about got the balance right and that's where we need to stay for the moment. The transfer from general reserve, right? It doesn't really help us with anything. It's not a prudent proposal. It's not a one-off for a specific. You really have to be very careful. And it shows the typical lack, I'm afraid, of financial understanding sits with the Conservative councillors in this chamber. To cut the council tax by 2%, I think it's outrageous of you considering that it's an attempt to ameliorate part of the damage done by your party's £293 million cuts to our budget. The fact that you're passporting the cost to people because central government won't pay for it and it's effectively only hitting northern councils, which funny enough are Labour-controlled, while southern councils, the length of the country down there, are making surpluses and getting more income, I think is terrible. Terrible position. And you're supporting it, Councillor Oliver. We've had to do this, otherwise we will have to make more cuts in services. And that is what we've tried to do. And that was why my speech about it being something that we've had to do, not wanted to do, is the key point in this. But we won't be doing it. And now that councillor Mullin has explained that it's park and cemetery wardens. Because we were curious, I say, why, why five extra park wardens would make any, any difference to anything at all. When we've lost hundreds of responsive local services staff who used to do the parks and once again, that's all down to nine years of austerity. But what I would say, councillor Mullin, is if you'd come to me to speak to me about this and it was a personal issue for you, I would have spoken with the chief exec about it as an item for consideration. And we can't do anything about it. So unfortunately, I have to deny the amendment on it because it's not right for us to try and change that now. But if there's an issue with cemetery and park wardens, I think we will look at that. We need to have that discussion with officers going forward. And I do wish you'd just come and spoken to me beforehand. Because when you put it in the context of why it's important to you, I understand that. So, Madam Mayor, sorry for taking so long, but we will be, I will be voting against this amendment because I think it's not 3.3 of 1% of our budget. It doesn't help us in any way. And it's the usual politics before a local election from the Conservative Party. And everybody must now see it for what it is. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Luda. Thank you, everyone who's spoken. We're now going to vote on the amendment, please. Vote on the amendment.
Madam Mayor, there are 11 votes in favour, no abstentions and 44 votes against, and therefore the amendment is defeated.
Thank you very much, Jean-Christophe. We now move on to the second amendment. Councillor Hudson, would you please move the amendment to the revenue budget by reading the passage?
Thank you, Mary Sonnet. Our amendment is only to the revenue budget. It finds an additional £765,000 of savings and puts that back in priority investments. The saving proposals we are putting forward are a one-off use of reserves with an ongoing saving arising from a move to four yearly poll elections. A review of governance services which incorporates a reduction of area committees and actually a reduction of the number of area committees to three, quoterminus, with parliamentary constituency boundaries. A review and reduction of special responsibility allowances to save £250,000. The roles of the mayor and the deputy mayor to be replaced by unpaid elected chairperson and deputy chairperson and allowances removed. Reducing councillors' expenses, food and drink provision, subsistence allowance and no longer providing free meals at council meetings. Introducing a workplace parking levy for elected members. Reviewing planning committees, reducing it to a single overarching committee and commensurate reduction in allowances for the councillors chairing those meetings. The removal of area committee people and place boards incorporating within the area committees and commensurate reduction in allowances for councillors chairing those boards. And to cease purchasing space for articles in the Vibe magazine. And the investments we're proposing are reinstating £60,000 of disabled student travel support, reinstating a means-tested pest control service, reinstating a means-tested pool reinstating a means-tested pest control service, reinstating a means-tested bookkeeping collection service, increasing funding to the library and museum service, to parking wardens, reinstating voluntary community sector contracts support, particularly for agencies supporting disabled and young people. Introducing a self-financing dog warden service to be self-financing from 20, uh, 2020 to 2021. Freezing the ground bin charge this year and limiting allotment rent rises to inflation-only. Move the amendment, Mayor, thank you.
Councillor O'Brien, do you second the amendment?
I second the amendment, Madam Mayor. I'm reserved right to speak.
Councillor Hudson, would you like to speak to your amendments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Solent. This amendment is quite simple. It seeks to rein in council allowances and free meals, reduce the cost of the mayor's office of committees and elections, and pass the savings on to some of the more vulnerable people in the city of Sunderland. We've several times made the case for councillors sharing the burden of cuts with residents. Has already been discussed again tonight, and we'd like to make it as part of our amendment. I found it disappointing actually hearing Paul Stewart talking about cutbacks to jobs and services at the civic centre. But he didn't mention that Labour has red lines when it comes to making cuts, and that's any cuts that are cut to councillors. We're looking at charging for staff to park, for council staff to park in car parks, but not introducing charges for councillors. But protecting the buffet and councillors' expenses and Sunderland is still spending 250,000 pounds per year on council allowances, more than Newcastle Council. Now, Graham Miller referred to the campaign against the sort of council buffet as the worst example of pork barrel politics. In my view, the worst example of pork barrel politics is cronyism. It's appointing only one party to the leadership of committees in a council, having only one party chair all the scrutiny committees, and having all those jobs for, for, for Labour colleagues. That to me looks very poor and smacks of cronyism. I was also a little concerned actually to hear Graham referring to the, um, the independent remuneration committee. And Graham said, we will agree whatever they recommend this year, which maybe gave me a little cause of concern about whether they're actually proposing to increase councillors' allowances this year. And I hope that's not the case. In our view, there's a huge saving to be made in reducing allowances and, you know, reducing the cost of area and planning committees and moving to all-of-elections. The council ought to, I think, at the very least, look into this seriously, which is not something it's chosen to do over the past few years. But it's what the public asked us to do in the budget consultation the council did a year ago. And I don't think it's right to simply ignore that fact. And it has again been brought up in this meeting that this is something that the people of Sunderland do hold as a pretty common opinion. And I think we ought to listen to them. Um, if you look at the savings that we're proposing, you'll see that, and actually unlike the, those in the Conservative amendment, they don't, like, you know, the trade union cuts affect the public, they only affect us here at the civic centre. And what we could do with that 765,000 pounds is quite significant and actually could benefit quite a lot of people. They're small changes, I don't argue with that, but they could benefit a lot of people. We think we can do more to fund the voluntary and charity sector, not least because we're asking so much more of them now. Um, we don't think we should be penalising people for using a ground bin or keeping an allotment. These are things we need to encourage. Certainly given that in a month or so's time, people might need to be growing their own fruit and veg as we struggle to get it in from the continent. I think we can do more to help people who cannot afford pest control. Certainly when I look at my own ward, but then also when I look at, you know, Hendon, Southwick, Pallion. Um, there are serious problems with bulky waste collections in these wards with pest control. And it's clear that people can't afford it. I think people who are on benefits, on pensions, really ought to be supported to access these services. That's something we asked last year, and it's something we're asking again this year, and we hope the leadership will consider it. We'd also like to, um, to put money back into the museum and library. I'm really pleased, as I will hope to say it a bit later in the meeting, that the council leadership is taking such an enlightened view and investing so much in improving the museum and library. Really needs it, but it's a great move. What worries me about it is whether it's sustainable in terms of staff resource. I actually think that there is perhaps a need for a greater number of museum and library staff if that is to really be a success. So it's quite a simple and small change we're offering there. I am not pretending that this radically alters the funding situation Sunderland faces. It's blatantly obvious to anyone that the government is strangling local authorities. The point we're making this evening is really to reiterate that councillors must share the burden. What we have proposed is a simple, completely feasible and costed way in which we can do that together. Thank you, Mayor Solent.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak on the amendment? Councillor Dixon? Councillor Moore? Councillor Stewart? Councillor McKnight? Councillor Lawson? Councillor Oliver? Councillor Hassel? Thank you, councillor Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, there's a distinction tonight between our amendment and that of the Liberal Democrats. And there is still doubt in my mind that the Liberal Democrats have used this budget debate to advocate contempt for the committee system on this council. As shown over the years, they've had nothing but contempt for the committee system. And sometimes they prove that by not turning up at meetings. In my opinion, this is where we disagree. So you don't necessarily have to change the system of committees in order to save costs. We're with them on allowances, as has been clearly mentioned tonight, the council all have convention it again. But to reduce or scrap committees that are either running okay, that could be improved with ongoing improvement, which would happen, really it's the allowances that tower me upon. And I really do find myself getting quite cross with the suggestions they've made in order to save money. For example, the planning committee. We would certainly not go down the route of one overarching committee. I just can't see in a million years how this could work at all. It was difficult enough organising three committees on the same day. And with the possible length of the meetings, you might have to pay for an overnight stay, never mind a shed. It would eliminate members from the planning procedure, local expertise and knowledge would be lost. Planning committees allow so-called backbench councillors to make citywide contributions to the system of local government. This would take it away, you have a very large number of people, and I suggest it just wouldn't work. So while I accept procedures can be improved, we again, to stress, believe that allowances are our main argument. An overarching committee to me is to centralise, to bureaucratic, covering a mass area. And with the inevitable reduction in numbers, how many opposition councillors would be on them? And this is something that we really do care about. We do like to take our place on committees, unlike other parties. And we would fight for our place on it. So this is a non-statistic, as far as I'm concerned. Area committees, well, this is going to be a tricky one tonight because you've had a go at us for not, not accepting an increase. Now I'm going to have a go at the Liberals for the reduction. And I really do feel very, very strongly about this, that a reduction in the budget of 100,000 pounds for some of the most vulnerable people in our, in our city is an absolute disgrace, frankly. Moving the committees from three down to three, so we've got the planning committee down to one, we've got the area committees down to three. The current committee that I'm on is the East Area. Ward councillors work collectively irrespective of the political party. There's a genuine interest, and there's expertise in that area. And this just will be ruled by increasingly geographical basis of the committees. But where I really do get cross tonight is the, is the actual system of getting rid of place boards and people boards. I mean, this is really unbelievable. I mean, this system was created with the inspiration of your late leader and our late leader, Paul Watson. And a lot of really important work is done by these, these two boards. The schemes that go on, I mean, I'm involved in, in community hubs, as are other councillors, carers, youth work, people who have got difficulties, learning difficulties, and all of this is going to be scrapped by the Liberals. Quite frankly, it's a disgrace. Um, and, and that's something which is why I can't accept this amendment because of that. So I agree with the sentiment about allowances, but as far as I'm concerned, and there's no way I can support that based on the rules. The deputy mayor, the mayor and deputy mayor, but we kind of half-agree. I, I think the allowances should be looked at, I really do. Um, as far as I'm concerned, a, a mayor or a deputy mayor has the honour of, of representing United States City. And when they look back on their time as mayor or deputy mayor, they'll not be thinking about the allowance, they'll be thinking about the honour. Uh, they do a lot of work, which I don't think the Liberals are too knowledgeable about. But I do agree with them that the actual allowances should be looked at. I think the Labour Party themselves have made an absolute mess about the meals, we really do. Um, we are paying nine pound fifty for the pleasure of the meal afterwards. We are paying, we're not on the coattails of anybody, I can't imagine councillor Francis on the coattails of anybody. And this is something that we basically think is right. The parade meetings is at nine pound fifty. It's not a lot of money, and it gives a very good message to the people of Sunderland. And again, to slight support, the Liberals are getting that. I did pass committee room number two on Monday. And outside, there was lots of good quality buffet food which had been left uneaten. I don't know what was going on in that committee room, but that's an example of waste. What was it?
It's not international, was it?
Well, they should have eaten more because they, they left, they left a heck of a lot. It's a worthy thing, but you know what, they're getting it, it's waste and it shouldn't, should be the case. So basically, we feel very strongly that the committees, especially area committees, I follow councillor Kelly. I'm, I'm very passionate about area committees and the place boards and the people board that I, that I represent. I go into my ward and what councillor Miller said is nonsense. Councillors work very hard and I, I hope it was tongue-in-cheek because it was slightly uncoiffed, if I may say so. Um, so here, I'm going to oppose the Liberal Democrat amendment because of the way in which it's going to cut essential services and for people least advantaged in our society. And for that reason, that's going to look for me not to support the amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Dixon. Councillor Maudie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, just rise to oppose the amendment by the Liberals. And really just to focus on the issue of the all council elections. I think it's an absolute front to democracy. To deny the people of Sunderland the opportunity to express an opinion on the quality or otherwise of their local councillors three years, four years, is what we support on this side of the chamber. And I think to reduce to all elections once every four years is, again, it's anti-democratic. Councillor Hudson, in his comments, mentioned the fact that Labour councillors hold a lot of the committee chairs, all of the committee chairs. The simple fact of the matter, councillor Hudson, is that the people of Sunderland, every year, elect the Labour Party to run this city. This is an attempt by the Liberal Democrats to govern from third place. They have to admit that they are routinely rejected at the polls by the people of Sunderland, and long may that continue, Madam Mayor. The final thing I just want to mention is in relation to the area committees, and I agree with a lot what councillor Dixon said. This money, to oppose this money is, in my opinion, a disgrace. This money goes directly to some of the most vulnerable people in our world. It's an ability of communities to work with their local councillors to effect real change. And some of the funding that goes direct to the frontline and to oppose it for what effectively is a populist policy of the worst kind, Madam Mayor. I think it's a disgrace as well. Ask colleagues to oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maudie. Councillor Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just like my colleague, I'll not be supporting the, the amendments that's been put forward by the Liberal Democrats. In doing so, I'd like to concentrate on a couple of areas. First of all, in relation to the various references to council allowances and subsistence allowances and, well, yes, there's a whole list of them there, and I'm not going to go through them all. But what it shows is there's, there's a theme here, and it's, it's almost anti-councillor. I sometimes wonder why they want to be councillors in the sense that they always seem to be attacking anything that might, might suggest that elected members will have the opportunity to take up a position on this council and not have another job anywhere else? I mean, how else is somebody else, somebody supposed to survive if they don't have a council allowance? And, um, wish to take up the opportunity to, to be involved in the council. But anyway, what I would like to see is that the Liberal Democrats and the Tories are, there's a common theme here. And that is when in opposition, they'll oppose council allowances. And surprise, surprise, Liberal Democrats are no different. As soon as they get into power, they do exactly the same as the Conservatives. And they can't get hold of the money quick enough, Madam Mayor. I mean, a few examples, and one of the two is I'm going to wind the leader up by giving some examples of what the leaders get. Some, there's not, there's not many Liberal Democrat controlled authorities, I have to admit. But in Sunderland, the leader gets 42,000 pounds, so that's a little bit more than you. So yeah, that looks at you, there we have it. Okay, Bedford, the leader there, the nice liberal there who's really must have a smile on his face, gets 62,500, something, 62,500 pounds, which is a huge amount. So you, you should be getting deep tears now.
Crying.
But that's, that's, you know, they had Watford, where they recently took control. They're popping 66,000 there for the Liberal Democrat leader of, of that council. Madam Mayor, there, there is a consistency here that in opposition, let's oppose allowances. When we get into power, let's keep them and let's, let's have more of them. And that's for both of those parties, not one in particular. So I would oppose their suggestions with regards to what they propose for council allowances. If we turn the issue of democracy, as councillor Maudie said, you either believe in democracy or not. And I get the feeling that perhaps that they're not quite, quite too sure. My own view is you can't get enough of democracy, you can't get enough of the opportunity to be able to vote. And there should be more elections, not less. Uh, I have, I have to admit, tempted though to actually go into all of the elections, at least just for once. And that would mean we would get rid of all views on it one go. That's tempting, it is tempting. But the truth is, you can't put a price on the value of someone's vote. You can never have too much democracy, and we need to involve local residents more, not less, in the decision-making of this city and also their local neighbourhoods, which is why I'm fundamentally opposed to the proposal. We need to be looking at more ways to ensure democratic involvement of the people of this city, not less. And I think through the leadership of the Labour Party here, it's certainly our intention, and I'm not going to give anything away, but certainly when we release our manifesto, it will show that there's a real firm commitment to ensure greater democracy in this city. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Stewart. Councillor McKnight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, I will be opposing this amendment, as you probably gather. Um, quite frankly, I call bull, to be honest, this is just too easy. Um, the Fib Dems once again grandstanding about councillors' expenses. Let me tell you something, for your information, I don't claim expenses. I am however, like most of my colleagues on this side of the chamber, granted an allowance. Councillor Hudson and his colleagues are genuinely sincere about putting allowances. I challenge him here now for him and his deputy to hand back their special responsibility allowance or even a significant proportion of his basic allowance for all his colleagues. I somehow don't think that will happen, ladies and gentlemen, for some reason. With regard to cronyism and not having a chair on a committee, I challenge him to get him and his members to regularly actually turn up. That would be a real good start. It's actually quite pathetic when you haven't got a committee and a chair that doesn't turn up. Here, what am I doing? So just to keep the nice and nice looks in, Madam Mayor. Once again, this is grandstanding on councillor Hudson's part for a brief summer net worth social media soundbite. Totally laughable.
Thank you, councillor McKnight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had intended sitting quietly tonight.
I had intended sitting quietly tonight and not contributing to this debate, but I can't sit back and listen to the attack on area committees. And I wonder if the Liberal Democrat councillors are actually aware of the work that area committees do? Do they turn up to the meetings, or do they do what they usually do and don't bother? Do they take part in conversations about area priorities? Do they engage with the VCS network within their areas to find out what they think and how that budget should be spent? And, you know, as for wanting to get rid of the place and people boards, that's where a lot of the work takes place. You know, our people and place board chairs, if you don't know what work they do, you should have a conversation with them as well and find out exactly what they're up to. Personally, I'm very proud of the great work carried out with relatively small amounts of money in the coalfield, making a massive difference to vulnerable people within our communities. And just some examples, working on reducing social isolation, working with older people, working with people with mental health problems, working with children and young people to protect the environment, attacking holiday hunger by ensuring that any funding that goes to holiday clubs includes a healthy meal for those children who are attending. Increasing physical exercise and improving health, just, I could go on, but the red light would come on, Madam Mayor. So, you know, I'm sure most councillors in this council chamber are aware of the good work of area committees, and I think the value for money that area committees bring to the council as well. And just in case councillor Hodgson doesn't know, and I don't know what it's like in other areas, but I'm sure it's no different to the coalfield. Ninety per cent of the coalfield SIB budget was given to VCS groups to deliver on our priorities. So when councillor Hodgson comes along and talks about reinstating voluntary community sector contracts to support disabled and young people, maybe he needs to talk to some of those groups about the funding that they're receiving from area committee budgets.
Thank you, councillor Lawson. Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Dixon's already spoken for the group, but just to confirm that we will not be supporting the Liberal Democrat amendment, although there are a large number of things that we do agree with. But of course, because it goes against our own proposed reduction in the council tax rise, and we can't support it. But I will look at a few of the things that councillor Hodgson has set out, and would like to clarify one or two things, especially on council allowances and what councillor Miller said previously, that of course, the remuneration panel is independent, but it makes a recommendation to the council that then has to decide whether we agree with it and accept it or not. We, of course, if they come to us and say they think we should get a rise in our allowances, we can vote that down. Now, of course, councillor Miller's colleagues up in Newcastle, all this complaining about austerity, have just helped themselves to a tax rise. To a council, councillors' rights, that's what they've done. Just, well, you know, we're sitting here talking about Basildon and Redditch, I don't even know where these places are. So, but I mean, I'm happy to, yes. I think I might go down to Bedfordshire if they're getting sixty thousand pounds a year, it sounds good down there. But remember, of course, that the only rise we've had in council allowances in recent years was the deputy mayor's allowance, that went up very considerably indeed. And we mustn't forget that there were some Labour councillors who lobbied for that rise to the remuneration panel. It was actually councillor Portous who said that he needed the money to buy new suits for all the events he had. Maybe he's at Debenhams tonight, maybe that's where he is. So, anyway. But on the other, some of the other issues, I mean councillor, I think we've peened over the free meals enough, but councillor Dixon did make an important point that at the very least, there should be absolutely no waste. We cannot have members of the public walking past, you know, mountains of food, just left. I'm reminded of former councillor Paul Madison, who used to, very back, sort of five or six o'clock in the evening, he would go out of the group rooms, walk along the committee rooms, and pick up all the sandwiches that were getting a bit dried out, take them home, which was a synagogue, by the way, to eat in the evening. So that's, you know, that's my tea for the evening. So maybe we need a few more like that. But I think really, to be honest, Madam Mayor, that's all I was going to say about the Liberal Democrat motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Oliver. Councillor Hasselhoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a couple of points I just want to cover off around our vote. Firstly, I want to answer about was councillor Stewart's discussion about all-of-elections, following on from Robert's line. It's interesting that Labour-controlled middle of the spread, Labour-controlled Durham have all-of-elections. So if they can do it there, it's not democratic, it isn't democratic there, but it would be here. It's very strange. The key issues I want to talk about are pest control and bulk, the item collection first of all. Regularly, I get comments from my residents, very concerned about the fact that they can't get to this bit if they don't have a car. They're reliant on paying a charge which they can afford. Those on the most limited incomes are forced to leave items in gardens or backyards for months on end to save up, and it would just be a small measure by this council to make life a bit easier. Second is introduction of free pest control services. Again, residents in some areas of this city are dealing with mice and rats in their home on a regular basis, they aren't unclean, and they're horrified by what's happening. And they are struggling to afford the fifty-pound charge. And I want to say, it is a good quality service when they do come out, and residents who can afford it when they've saved up can't help but praise it. But until then, they're either forced to live with the problem, or trying to use poor quality products, sorry, from some of the cheaper shops in the town, or relying on borrowing from family, or worse, of all, the scrupulous lenders. It's, again, it's a small change which would make a big difference to some people's lives. The next item is the brown bin collection charge. The charge has gone up consistently since the brown bins were brought in, and people who are on restricted pensions and wages are struggling to cover that cost. And the people at the doorstep are telling me they can ill afford it, because again, they're trying to do the right thing, recycle or at least send it off to be composted, and are now sitting there having to make an active decision of whether to black-bag the rubbish and just put it in the green bin, which will inevitably increase the amount we're sending a landfill. And finally, what really does concern me is the proposed increase in allotment rents. Now, I have seen a letter that one of my residents has received, which is proposing an increase of fifty-two per cent on them as an individual as a renter. I think it should be reversed, and we should at least just limit it to inflation. There is a big, big demand in this city for allotments, and one officer I was speaking to about this said, I believe we're a hundred and fifty per cent oversubscribed. There are big draw for families who don't have gardens, who are limited to a backyard, and I regularly get comments from my residents about the fact they've been on a waiting list for years. And now, for those that get to the front of the queue, are seeing such a large increase in that rent, I don't think it's fair. And to be quite honest, my own grandfather, I remember going to his allotment, and if he saw this sort of increase, based on the way he was on the state pension, it would be a genuine question of can I afford that level? Now, I don't have every single figure of all the changes on the allotments, but this is one individual person who's facing that sort of increase, and that's why we've tried to make that change in our budget proposals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I just, personal point of explanation, a number of members have referred to the buffet of the meal that was outside of the committee room two. I've just had a word with councillor Beck, who informed me that that buffet was paid for by the TUC, and it was not a council buffet. I just wanted to make that clear, it's been referenced a couple of times, implied it was council-funded, but it wasn't, it was paid for by the trade union congress. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed for that, councillor. Councillor O'Brien, do you wish to speak?
Only enough, Madam Mayor, I do wish to speak. First of all, we are proposing to bring in a cost-neutral dogwood setup, which will cost us about twenty-four grand at the start, which should be cost-neutral, so it's a bit more in keeping with Graham's suggestion that the Conservatives were slightly more ambitious than we were. And lastly, actually, it's a subject I talked about last year, what means quite vitally, actually, disabled children's travel to and from school and educational programmes. I won't bore you with the same story, Madam Mayor, of my own experience. However, it does become me, that resident of mine called Grant, he used to use a service. Grant is a young lad who lost his travel to and from his educational course, which in his own words, gave him value and a sense of being. This means, this means testing the way of going about travel to and from educational programmes, to and from schools, not working quite clearly. If his parents had to pay for a taxi because he's autistic, actually somewhat similar to my nephew, it would cost him about thirty pounds a trip, and sixty pounds return. So I don't think a family who are on the breadline can afford that. And actually, it really frustrates me slightly that we can give fifty thousand pounds to the Spice Girls, but we can't see in our way to give sixty grand to, I said fifty grand, sixty grand to disabled children to get to and from school every year. It seems to me that this is more important, that actually, these children and young adults can give much more sustainable economic growth to this city than the Spice Girls can. Because let's face it, our population, whomever it may be, disabled, able-bodied, gay, lesbian, transsexual, et cetera, give meaning and give economic growth to our city. It is just unforgivable that the Labour Party cut this service. And for me, again, for a personal point of view, it is drastically in need of reinstatement immediately. I hope the Labour Party can see it in the grand wisdom of voting for our motion or amendment, I should add. But I doubt that will happen. Greed will always prevail.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. Leader, have right to reply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I disagree with the amendment package as put forward by the Liberal Democrats, and I'll just go through them all. The election item, the saving of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand pound, I can support the proposal, because I do not believe it would be in the best interest of democracy in Sunderland. The current arrangement where one council seat is up for election each year with a fall of year in year four has been in place for over fourteen years. The last all-out election in Sunderland was two thousand and four, and that was required due to boundary changes across time and year. And since then, we've been on a three with a fourth-year gap. A change of voting system would create significant upheaval, and I've got to be honest, I doubt that it would be successful in practice. Any change would require a public consultation, discussions with the electoral commission and secretary of state, and crucially, the agreement of two-thirds of council to agree to the change. And to be honest, gentlemen, that's votes that the Liberal Democrats do not have. Even if it were easier to make a change, I still don't think it is the right thing to do. The current arrangements ensure that our residents get to exercise their democratic right in the voting booth three years out of four. It avoids a situation where a party can be elected and then not worry about representing their residents for four years, safe in the knowledge that they cannot be voted out. And this party, the Labour Party, are not scared of going to elections every year, because we will stand on a record, something that the residents of this city have consistently supported by electing us back as the majority group. It also brings a degree of stability to the wards, as any change in representation by councillors is staggered, avoiding a situation where potentially all three elected members can change at the same time, bringing in brand-new councillors in, which is fine, but they could be completely inexperienced. And what does that do to the democratic service of local councillors in that ward for the next two years, for us to learn what they're doing? But this proposal is predicated on the use of reserves for next year, and for this purpose, which I think is flawed, because I don't think it's right and I don't think it'll work. I don't think we should be considering using reserves for something that clearly only the Liberal Democrats in this room think is a good idea. I'm delighted that support from the Conservatives is there about the comments regarding the reducing area committee and the hundred thousand pound that goes with it. I don't support the suggestion, because I genuinely think it would reverse the hard work undertaken by, and I was going to say Labour councillors, but I'll say all councillors, to create, the budgets available for use at a local level. But I will challenge the Liberal Democrats to actually get out and talk to your residents and find out what they want, because councillor Wilson's point's absolutely correct. Things that you're asking for in your amendments are being done now by active area committee place and people boards, supported by Conservative colleagues who attend these meetings. I have to say, and I'm careful what I say, attendance at these meetings is not something that you have a strength in general. So you maybe need to do a bit more of that and get a bit of understanding. Once again, the SRAs, I'm going to repeat what I said to the Conservatives, and yes, councillor Oliver, that we could well have the independent remuneration panel come back to us with a recommendation to increase allowances this year. And I can guarantee you that if that is what they do, this Labour group will say no to it, and we will take no rise like we have done for the last seven years. I expect everybody in the chamber will adopt that policy, because I think six out of the last seven years, the independent remuneration panel has advised that councillors' allowances should be increasing, and at least in line with inflation, and we've said no to that as well. So I don't expect we'll be doing a Newcastle. But then again, I don't think Newcastle's the benchmark for good anything. I'm the leader of Sunderland council, and I think Sunderland is where we should focus our activity, Robert. I fundamentally disagree with the mischievous and vicious attack on the mayor and deputy mayor budget. Whether you understand it or not, being deputy mayor, being mayor, has a cost that goes with it. The sheer level of work that the mayorality do representing the city as ambassadors, both in the city and outside of the city, genuinely, you need to understand what that's about, and I will fight, that's one allowance that I will fight for, because I think it's right that we make sure that the mayor and the deputy mayor get that support financially, because there is a cost to be, that you are representing the city, you have to look good, you go out with the chain gangs, that means you're paying for tickets for dinners, the mayor is paying for tickets for dinners, and she is buying raffle tickets, and she's joining in with all of that. Nobody's paying it for her, that's the mayor paying it from her own purse, and that is part of what the responsibility allowance is for. So you really need to understand, but you don't understand because you don't care about the system, you're not interested in why we actually do things. What you're doing is trying to find cheap messages that your local media will print as, oh, it's an attack on councillor allowances, it's an attack on councillors. But it's not right, gentlemen, it really isn't. I will always fight you on stuff like this, because I think they're just trying to score cheap points. Reduce councillors' expenses, well, we've been there. I oppose you on it, because I think you're wrong, and I will continue to support having a hot meal or a cold meal at the end of eight meetings a year for staff, guests and councillors if they choose to take the offer up. I warmly accept what the Conservatives are going to do, and if that is what you do, gentlemen, carry on. But I think you're devaluing yourselves ever so slightly, because at the end of the day, if you don't value yourself coming to a meeting after a hard day, doing either council work if you're retired, or coming from work, Robert, like yourself, nobody else will, and you really shouldn't drop to their level on this. Because that's all about cheap points scoring, all right? A workplace parking levy for elected members, it's disrespectful, we're not staff, we've already taken a hit over seven years, an eighteen per cent reduction in the actual value of the allowances that we're receiving. So we are making a contribution here, gentlemen, and for you to have been here two years, and I do wish you'd have your own meeting in your own time, councillor O'Brien, you might learn something if you listen.
No, I won't.
Oh, strong words, strong words. But the answer is no, we will not be moving to a parking levy for councillors, I think that's a disgraceful suggestion. But that is the theme of the Liberal Democrat proposals, they've got no respect for the important work that councillors... They've got no respect for the important work that councillors undertake. All this would do is increase the workload and pressure of people by having them worry about whether they can afford the two hundred pound a year from their allowance. Now, that allowance can maybe be their only main income because some councillors are retired or some councillors are limited by capacity to be having a job. And you're suggesting that that is another thing to do when they've already not taken an increase in their allowances for seven years. The review of planning committees is just as, councillor Dixon, and thank you for saying what you said, Michael, by the way. Everything you said was, why, that is right and they are wrong. It's not practical to try and push everything into one area when it's clearly just an attack on allowances that you're not happy that the Labour Party councillors have. Because you know why? Because we've got sixty councillors and you've got six. And we are the ruling party and therefore we run committees because that is how democracy works. The ruling party fills the positions of authority within the council. And as councillor Stewart has pointed out, your party are quite as guilty as everybody else if it is a guilt, and I don't think it is a guilt, of taking allowances when you get into government and other local authorities. God help the city if you ever get in here because it'll be one step too far. Same comment about placing people boards. Placing people boards are an integral part of the glue that links local communities to their councillors. And if you don't see how that's a valuable structure to have, especially when the money going into the area committees for us to do more work, oh yeah, that would involve you doing some work though, guys, yeah, yeah, that's why you don't get it. That is why it's important that we keep doing what we're doing and why it has worked for us for the last four years. Cease purchasing space for councillor articles in the Vide magazine. Well, I've already said, I think it's a good and cost-effective use of nine thousand pound for all councillors to benefit from. So I challenge you the same way as I challenge the Conservatives. Get articles showing good work being done in the wards to the community Vide. You know what? You never know, people might not write in screaming, who are these? The disabled student travel support actually is an issue that I understand by councillor O'Brien.
But a matter of extension for the lead-up to conclusion remarks.
Thank you. Nexus already operate a concessional scheme for children and students in time and year, funding it in part through the levy that currently Sunderland pays for. And given this is a regional scheme, I genuinely don't see the need to extend this provision. Further, Sunderland City Council via Together for Children support our children and students who have special educational needs and disabilities with travel to and from school and college where it's appropriate. But councillor O'Brien, the case that you mentioned, send it to me, bring it to me, let's have a look at it. Because it's not about impacting on any one individual. But once again, as I said to councillor Muller, Muller, if these things are only brought in full council, there's nothing can be done about it at the time. So that is a conversation we can have. To instate a means-testing pest control service because we're not reinstating something we've never had. Just how much would that cost? Is that fifty-eight thousand net? How many people are going to be doing the means testing? Where are they going, where's the cost of setting all of that up? I would love us to be able to give a free pest control service, but we can't because of the two hundred and ninety-three million pounds that we've lost out of our budget, which your party are partly to blame for setting up the coalition and allowing austerity politics to happen. You know, we have to be realistic about our financial position. I genuinely worry about the administrative burden that might be created as means-testing schemes are notoriously cost-heavy. And we will continue to monitor our charging policy on this because if we do get extra money, I would love councillor Haswell to do what you want and bring those charges down. And if we've got enough, reduce them altogether, but we do not have the budget flexibility to do that just now. And I genuinely question whether means testing would actually save us money or cost us more money because somebody would have to do all that means testing. And it's the same comment regarding the bulky item collection service. Because once again, that all has to be means-tested by someone. You know, so once again, I don't know, it doesn't say whether that's a net saving or whatever because if it's not a net saving, the figures are worthless. So if we had more money, we would do some of this, I've got no doubt because we genuinely are here to look after our residents. Nobody wants to be charging residents for bulky waste, nobody wants to be charging residents for pest control. But we've had to because these are the choices that we've had to make because the budget is reduced. Parking wardens, I'm not clear how having one extra parking warden would help anything because that's what twenty-four thousand will pay for. I just genuinely don't understand how that is beneficial to us at all. Our current staffing arrangements are based on our parking arrangements, income targets and experience of enforcement. And I think we've got the correct balance, we seem to have enough people here, our parking is making a surplus. So I don't understand why you think one extra parking warden is going to be helpful to us here. The voluntary community sector contract support. I am glad that you're aware of the pressure facing our children's services, which is consistent with the picture across the country. And we are not alone in having to increase budgets and make difficult decisions about the services we can afford to deliver. But you should also note that through Together for Children, we already commission a range of short breaks for children and young people with disabilities from the voluntary community sector. If you look closely at our budget proposals and the additional support that we've been putting into this area over the past couple of years to deal with these financial pressures, you will see that we are working towards what is a financially viable position. But we do do this, gentlemen. Introduction of a self-financing dog warden service. And once again, twenty-four thousand pays for one member of staff. That person's staff's going to be the busiest person in the council. Exactly where are you going to put them? Which of our numerous parks are they going to start in? How many fines do you think that they're going to have to serve to pay for themselves? Bearing in mind that fines are appealed, overturned. Just because somebody raises a fine for fifty pounds doesn't mean we get fifty pounds. Who's going to do that for them? Is it going to be the dog warden? So the dog warden does the fines, takes the paperwork home? You know, honestly, once again, what, gentlemen, what is this about? You know, it's just a ridiculous dog, just put twenty-four thousand pounds in because it'll look good because we're saying we need a self-financing dog warden service. Well, to me, a service is a bit more than one person. And I would like it in Washington if you can arrange, you have it, please. But I'm sure councillor Oliver would like it in his ward and councillor Dixon would like it in his ward. So genuinely, you've got to do better than this, you really have to. And the brown bin charge, once again, it's like the other charges we've had to bring in because of a loss in budget, a loss in two hundred and ninety-three million. I pay the brown bin charge, right? If I didn't have the money to pay the brown bin charge, my grass cuttings would go in the green bin because that's what everybody else does, right? But it was correct to look at it because not every household in the city has a garden or has space for a brown bin. And this makes the people who want to have a brown bin service pay for the brown bin service if they can afford it. And I think that is a measured and sensible position for us to be in. So I absolutely refute that it's a bad thing for us to do. And I think in closing, your allotments. We are the cheapest in the North East for allotments. It's not something, once again, that we want to do. And this shows you how little money we have. Here we are, putting allotments charges up. To balance the books. And because we're putting allotment charges up by about on average twenty-six pound per allotment per year. But that is a sizable percentage increase because prior to it, people were paying fourteen pound a year, twenty-five pound a year for an allotment because our charges were so low. Now, it's because of your government's cuts to our budgets, gentlemen, that we've actually got to the stage that we're having to charge and increase charges for allotments. And bear in mind, this could be fifty-four million pound in extra cuts to this council's budget by 2022. So allotment charges might go up again. You know, it's just the acceptable face of having to have a balanced legal budget. It's not something the Labour group wished to do, but it's something that we've had to do because we feel it's fair and commensurate. And as councillor Wilson is pointing out, councillor Hodson, we are still the cheapest allotment service delivery in the north of England. So with that, Madam Mayor, I absolutely will be voting against the collective amendment of Liberal Democrats. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Leader will now go to the vote on the amendment, please.
Madam Mayor, there are five votes in favour, no abstentions and fifty votes against, therefore the amendment is defeated.
Thank you very much indeed. Now, can I ask, does any member have any comment or question on substantive vote? If so, will it please indicate, raise your hands? Councillor Hodson?
Thank you, Mr Hodson. I just wanted to obviously speak a little bit about the capital programme and just slightly return briefly to the revenue programme as outlined. I listened with interest, it very startled me, it seemed a long time ago to the portfolio holders, particularly Louise Farthing and Paul Stewart, speaking on behalf of Geoff Walker, talking about the challenges facing their portfolios. I do recognise actually that the savings target in children's services particularly is ambitious. And bearing in mind the past year's experience, you know, I really hope it is sustainable and genuinely feasible. It does seem very challenging and we don't want to see that service coming back in a sort of midterm budget amendment later in the year. I agree more generally that the government has failed to properly support social care and healthcare, particularly in local authorities, and is sleepwalking into a crisis. They've been told this by Labour councils. They've been told this by this one, they've been told this by Lib Dem councils, they've been told this by Conservative councils, by MPs, by the Local Government Association, by the NHS, by countless service providers. I think the Prime Minister is really taking ownership of the sort of looming disaster in this area because, and it's a mystery to me why the government is failing to address it because I don't see where the support is coming from and the failure to actually address this. Because there's so much cross-party agreement on this, it is baffling to me and I think to everyone in my group. With regard to the capital programme, and I'm actually, we're very happy to be supporting the Labour group's capital programme, but with some significant reservations that I didn't want to amend, but mainly to comment on. We are, as I have said in these meetings before, very concerned about the impact that Brexit could have on the city's economy and we're particularly worried about its potential to have an impact on the advanced manufacturing park, on the future of the port and relates to those, the transport corridor, the strategic transport corridor. Now, we've raised our objections elsewhere over the years, so it seemed unnecessary to make an amendment here. Especially as it's quite clear that the council's tied into these projects with little ability to limit or mitigate its commitment. And that said, we're pleased to hear that the council is looking at possible alternative arrangements for running the port. I think that's very sensible and I hope it will likewise look at ways to minimise and manage any potential risks over the next couple of years that Brexit and especially a no-deal Brexit might cause to projects like the IAN. We do propose, as we've made clear, plans for the civic centre replacement. We're concerned that the casual way the council's own master plan for the Vork site has been dismissed and we're now talking about, even in this meeting, about a public sector hub. We do not feel that spending over forty million pounds plus constructing a new civic centre is in the public interest. But the Labour Party has already heard and dismissed members' objections on that and I think it's quite clear that that's going ahead regardless. There are things in the capital programme that we do support. There's no escaping the need for ICT infrastructure improvements, likewise refers to the Promenade and smaller things like Barnes Park Cafe. And we support enthusiastically the plans for Roca Park, for Bishop Weymouth and the Heritage Action Zone, for new homeless accommodation. We commend the portfolio holders for pushing these through and we're hopeful that officers will succeed in their grant funding. I'm aware that lots of these have an asterisk saying that obviously they're reliant on external funding bids, which is important. I genuinely, we genuinely appreciate the hard work from officers that's gone into those funding bids and is still going into them. I know from having done funded bids myself, they're very, very demanding on staff time. I've previously criticised the sorry condition of Sunderland's library now decamped to the museum. And it's certainly true that some museum spaces as well need refurbishing. We've been really impressed actually with the improvements made to the museum shop over the last year. And I think that it also has to go to the private company running the cafe in the museum, which has done a lot to reinvigorate that building and make it more attractive space. And so on that basis, we're really pleased to see an ambitious project to redevelop the museum, library and winter gardens in this budget. The museum has been managing really well despite strained circumstances and I think that recent shows like Grayson Perry, the BP portrait exhibition, the current Leonardo exhibition have shown that the team there are punching above their weight. They deserve a lot of credit. My one note of caution, which was reflected in the revenue budget amendment we made, is, well, one, do we have a backup plan if those grants fail? Is there something we can do? And I'd be curious to hear just some comments from the portfolio holder, what our options there are. And likewise, if it is successful, can we, is it sustainable in terms of staff resource to actually significantly improve the museum, can we keep it going? And that's why we wanted to put some money back into that service. The thing I did want to say briefly about that is that is one of those sort of services, the museum and library, they have faced a significant amount of cuts around the country, but they're very, very valuable beyond their cultural offer, they're very important to public health as well. And I do commend the work that the council officers and the cabinet are doing to improve that. Thank you, Mr Hodson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a brief comment on the capital budget and then return to the revenue budget to sum up. The main item, of course, in the capital budget for next year is the forty-one million pounds to be spent on the new civic centre on the Vork site. It's well known that the Conservative group opposes that and I think it is not that popular within the city. Councillor Miller referred to it as sort of a domino, one domino will be put on and forth. The problem is, it's all dominos paid for by the taxpayer, it's a public sector hub. And the problem is, you know, as you get so often in Labour councils, everything comes back to the taxpayer. We do feel that the Vork site should be private sector-led. And there are plenty of places in the city where you could refurbish some of the old buildings, like Down Home Side, quite another set of places, and you could have the civic centre somewhere else at a much less cost. The reason why we didn't move an amendment to the capital budget on that is simply because money is already being spent on that, we wouldn't want to waste that. We would, of course, if we had forty-one million pounds to spend, spend it on other things. We would spend it on leisure facilities at the seafront, which we think are absolutely essential. And if the leisure centre in Washington costs you eleven million pounds, then you could certainly get a good leisure centre at the seafront to really kickstart that because nothing much has happened with Siggian there. And also, we would actually want to fund the library. I know there's a Heritage Lottery bid in, but if that doesn't come off, we would want that to be funded from the capital budget and have something like they have in South Shields with the Word, which costs about sixteen million pounds but is very, very successful indeed. So those were the changes that we favour but have not put down in an amendment. And finally, just a comment really on the budget as a whole political comment. I mean, councillor Miller referred to it really, I mean, the problem is the council tax base, we know that. The Labour Party in Sunderland has to accept some responsibility for the financial situation we're in. No one's denying, no one's denying the money taken away since 2010. And of course, what was the reason for that? Because the Labour Party left the largest deficit ever. I'll make it a little bit simpler, this guy called Liam Byrne, who put it really, 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 really simply and he said, there's no money left. The Labour Party doesn't really seem to have learned its lesson, all Labour governments run out of money. But they're running around. But they're running around like kids in sweet shops, giving money here, there and everywhere. I mean, as I said a couple of days ago, Sharon Hodgson, hundred million pounds to wipe off student debt. You know, where is the money going to come from? The Labour Party just hasn't learned. We're going to end up like, you know, if they get in, it'll be like Venezuela but without sunshine. Councillor Miller, of course, referred to Ben Houchen down at Teeside. Be interesting to see what happens north of the Tyne now that you have selected your momentum candidate. Them above them. But the point is that the government offered you a way to make this city more prosperous. And they offered you more money, because you were always complaining about not having money. And you mucked around so much, Satya Javed got fed up with it and withdrew it off the table. So now Tyne and Wear, below the south of Tyne, does not have a devolution deal, so you will lose act. And you have to lose act. No, you will lose act. You will, you will lose act, because the point of devolution is to provide an incentive for a place to be more prosperous, and you have said no to it. So you've said no to the money and no to the powers to make this city more prosperous, but you complain about it. Unbelievable. And yes, things are happening down in Teeside, thanks, of course, to the Tory mayor. And of course, another theme I wanted to refer to, you do have some choice in your budget, of course. Ben Houchen chooses to spend a third of a million pounds on the Radio One concert. Okay, but the Spice Girls is your choice. You have chosen to do that. No one in London told you to do that. You know, we really minimise it, as if it's only fifty thousand. We don't even get all the Spice Girls, councillor Miller. But to put it, councillor O'Brien put it in perspective. I mean, that's a choice, isn't it? You could spend the money on disabled children, or you could spend it on the Spice Girls. There is a choice to be made there. And of course, let's not forget, that is fifty people's council tax. Fifty people have had their entire council tax spent subsidising concerts by the Spice Girls. Yeah, well. Concerts, no, we support concerts. Concerts do bring money into the city. Councillor Miller said, the football club said they didn't have the money for it. So the football club doesn't have fifty thousand pounds to promote Spice Girls concerts. How much money does it spend on players' transfers and wages? Are they spending on that? But they don't have fifty thousand pounds. My goodness, the finance director at the stadium, like, must be laughing his socks off about this. We've calmed them again, we've got fifty thousand out of them, that'll pay for, you know, one player's wages for half an hour or something like that. And finally, of course, Madam Mayor, also on this point of responsibility, one of the biggest pressures, of course, in the council budget is Together for Children. Now, the Labour Party, yes, the number of children in care has gone up, but the Labour Party must take some responsibility for that. They must take some responsibility, because it was a Labour council in charge when we were rated as the worst performing children's services department in the entire country. Now, what would they say if we did that? If we were in charge and the Tories gave you the worst performing in the entire country? Now, you've got to take some responsibility for that, because there's five million pounds of savings to be made. And I have to say, I agree with councillor Hodson, I can't really see those savings being made. I think it would be very, very difficult for you indeed, because you have got yourself into such a hole in it. You've got yourself into a reputational hole in it, you still have twice as big, twice a bigger percentage of supply agency workers there than the national average. And you must take some responsibility for that. No, wait, I'll just finish off, councillor Kelly. You know, this was, this was before, this was before the cuts. I mean, why, why you go down to Durham, children's services was rated outstanding, here it was rated as inadequate. They get the same funding in Durham, the same funding formula, it's also a Labour council. So you must take some responsibility yourself for the demise of children's services and the massive pressure that that is putting on the budget. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Oliver. Deputy Leader, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I just want to start by setting the Labour Group's budget proposals in a wider national context. We've heard a government minister after minister being wheeled out in the TV studios to proclaim that local government has been given an increase in their core government funding this year. Madam Mayor, to say that is being economical with the truth is an understatement. What the government do not wish people to know is that they themselves have included within their figures a presumed rise of four percent across the board in council tax. This, I believe, is just plain wrong and makes, amasses their failing economic policies. Madam Mayor, this has been a flagship of Tory economic policy for almost a decade. To pass the financial burden from central government to local government by slashing the revenue support rate. For example, our RSJ in Sunderland in 2017-18 was forty-four point seven million. In 2018-19, it was cut to thirty-six point two million. Next year, it's been further slashed to twenty-seven point five million. Madam Mayor, Sunderland's settlement this year is two point one percent, which is below the national average of two point eight percent. Now, one could argue, well, if everyone was in the country, was in and around that figure, well, that would be fair. However, Madam Mayor, I'm afraid that's simply not the case. For example, Runnymede Borough Council has a settlement of eight point four percent. Stratford upon Avon District Council has a settlement of eight percent. Chelwell gets seven and a half percent, and South Northamptonshire gets six point four percent. There are just four examples of those with inflation busting rises. And guess what they have in common, Madam Mayor? The Arles Tory Road Council. This government continues to funnel cash at the expense of northern towns and cities south. And the one point six million Brexit bribe, known as the stronger towns fund, will see the North East allocated a paltry one hundred and five million pounds. So if that's divided equally between the twelve local authorities in the North East, that would mean Sunderland's share of the money would be eight point seven five million. Around one million pound a year for the seven-year programme. So they've took two hundred and ninety million pounds from the city, and then they give one hundred and five million pounds back to the North East, and they expect us to be grateful for it. It's an absolute insult to the people of this city. And if the Prime Minister is serious about healing the Brexit divide that exists in our country, she needs to be coming to the table with similar money to which she bunged the DUP after the twenty-seventh general election. She needs to shake that magic money tree and find ten billion pounds for the North East alone, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this government has thrown billions of pounds away because of their total incompetence and desire to cling on to power, being put before the people of Sunderland and indeed the country. With their flawed economic policies that have prioritised tax giveaways over tax credits, protected boardroom billionaires while inflicting the bedroom tax, allowing failing Greland to waste billions while allowing millions to live on poverty. The money Chris Greland alone has wasted, as he's lured from crisis to catastrophe, as he's moved from department to department, is estimated to be over two point seven billion pounds. That could have paid the salaries of a hundred and twenty-three thousand nurses or seventy-one thousand secondary school teachers. And they have the nerve, Madam Mayor, as councillor Oliver did recently on the BBC Sunday Politics programme, to blame the last Labour government for the country's economic problems. The Tories have been in power for almost a decade now. It is time they own their flawed economic record and acknowledge their own incompetence. Because it is the people of Sunderland and other similar places that are suffering the consequences as we do each time the Tories are in office. Madam Mayor, I believe the proposals set out before council tonight reflect the financial reality that the council and wider local government sector now operates, that made very difficult decisions are still needed to be made today. Almost four years on from when the Tories and the Lib Dems told the country austerity would end by 2015. I would like to commend my cabinet colleagues, frontline members and officers for their efforts over many months in helping shape the budget, a budget that seeks to minimise the impact of Tory cuts on local communities as far as possible. I would also like to pay tribute to the continued work of the scrutiny coordinating committee, which under the leadership of councillor Diane Snowden has also played a very important role in the production of these proposals. As a council, we are continuing to recognise the vital importance of investing in the city to help improve its resilience. As the leader has outlined, we continue to demonstrate our ambitions for Sunderland through our capital programme, a hundred and sixty-nine million capital investment plan for next year, and a further two hundred and eight million investment plan for the following three years. This, taken together with other public and private sector investments, demonstrates Labour's commitment to transforming the face of Sunderland in the coming years. Madam Mayor, I commend the budget to council.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. Leader, you have a right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of brief comments to councillor Hodson, and then I'll speak with councillor Oliver. I did like you listing everybody who was against the government on the issues that you raised, councillor Hodson. And I appreciated you pointing out that everybody is against the government on what they're doing. So my question to you is, why not just support our budget then? Because we are the people trying to put a balanced budget together, and you acknowledged that everybody's pointing out that the government's flaws. So it would have been nice for you just to have said, you know what, that's a sensible revenue budget, that's a sensible capital budget, and go with it. I thought we were going to get through the whole meeting without someone mentioning the Brexit word, and you mentioned it. That's very, very close. Because Brexit complicates everything. Because we're still uncertain. And this council will respond to what happens down in Parliament with, as we get increasingly close to that cliff edge. I have to tell you that you're wrong about residents. Residents like the idea of a new, either whether you call it a civic centre or a city hall, which I quite like, because we are a city, and whether it's a public sector hub or not, residents, once again, the Echo hugely supportive of it. So you may not like it, gentlemen, but the residents of the city understand that this place has fallen down, and we need a new civic space to be part of a new city centre. So I appreciate otherwise what you said, councillor Hodson. At the end of the day, I've not really got much that I want to bang on about there. Councillor Oliver, however. Robert, if we'd waited on the private sector, we'd still be looking at an empty box site. Test kit. You wanted a massive white box at the end of the bridge, which would have destroyed the bridges, destroyed Fawcett Street, and destroyed the shopping offer in the city for miles around. That is genuinely what you think would have been the answer to Sunderland's need for a city centre. A massive white shed. Really? I hope the Echo responds and prints that. Because I think that it was a terrible idea then, and it's a terrible idea now. Right? The private sector has failed grossly to be remotely interested in investing anywhere. Primarily at the moment, because Brexit, and I'm going to say it now, is making life ever so nervous for people who want to invest. And that's your government's fault, because they've wasted two and a half years. So whilst this council is trying to line up commercial partners, your government is actively stopping us because of their incompetence and their lack of stewardship over the economy, and their inability to work with Parliament and EU to get a sensible deal on the table that will enact the will of the British people, which is that we must leave very, very soon. So do not mention the private sector here, because they've been terrible in this city, because they've not engaged with us, because they don't want to spend money. And that's not limited to just Sunderland, that's everywhere. And if we go to where you work, which is Newcastle, the only reason there's been craze in the ground in Newcastle for the last five years is the university. There's been no private sector investment in craze in the ground in Newcastle at all. Not one. It's all been based on university and research and development coming off it. So it's not just Sunderland that has this problem. It's a national problem caused by nine years of austerity politics, and it impacts more in the north than it does in the south, because we've got less money. So have a look at your government, see if they'll take their foot off everybody's necks. And we might get a bit of movement with the private sector, because they'll get a bit of, they'll relax a bit and realise, oh, we are going to make our money after all. Leisure facilities, I'll just say, are coming, so watch this space. You'd be excited. Residents of the city will like it. I'm never going to allow you, Robert, to mention the banking crisis as if it's our fault. Because absolutely nobody accepts that, except for possibly you, living in whatever alternative reality teachers in grammar schools live in. In 2010, when the coalition got into government and Labour lost, we handed over an economy that was growing and a surplus. Yes? You go and do your reading and your research, councillor Hodson, we had an economy that was growing. Sorry, my apologies. But it was growing. We'd handed over an economy that was growing. Right? And it's, don't take my word for it, go and have a look at the ONS, the stats are clearly there. And that was after Gordon Brown, God love him, saved the world. And he did, he stopped a global recession by pulling people together. And the year that Barack Obama was made the first black African-American president of the United States, and he should have got man of the year. Who did the world leaders vote for to be man of the year? It was Gordon Brown, because Gordon Brown was acknowledged as being the person behind stabilising the banks that stopped us going into a global recession and possibly a global depression. So you have a lot to thank the Labour Party for, Robert. I hope you go to bed thinking about that tonight. On the deal for the North East Combined Authority before it split into NOKA and the North East Combined Authority, it was the minister that took the deal off the table, not local authorities. He did it unlawfully, he didn't have the power, but he did it anyway, because he's a child and he threw his toys out the pram and stomped off in a heft, because we were having the chief to disagree with what we wanted in that deal. And that was a terrible decision by government. It was not a terrible decision by the seven local authorities that were involved in it at the time. So I would like you to reconsider what you said about that, because what you're saying is completely wrong. And children in care, we have more children in care now because of your austerity politics. We have an increasing cost to gather for children, because the front door is creaking, because we've got more and more children who are vulnerable and are at list. And the cost of social workers and everything that we have to do to deal with that has gone through the roof. Now, that's not even our decision. Know why? Because we had a government minister come and tell us how we should do this. It was a Tory government minister that we worked with under the previous leader. And we said, fine, that is what we will do. It was nicked, right? And Together for Children came out of the decision by a Tory minister and this council with our education specialists. And that is what we would do. And unfortunately, when you do have a very poor offstead, the worst that's ever been. And we've said that, Robert, I don't understand why you say we have to take some guilt for it. We've accepted guilt for it. Councillor Smith, who was the cabinet member for children, resigned, she resigned from her post at that. She took it upon herself to do that. Well, I wouldn't see you doing it, Robert. Another nice little job, really. Right? That, she resigned from her cabinet position because she did the honourable thing, because it was her area. But this Labour Group's always accepted that this was something that the council needed to have done better. And we have said so, we've said so in the press. When we got the update on the offstead and it wasn't where we want to be, we agreed entirely with the report. We said there is good work being done. The report said there was good work being done, but we had not got to where we needed to be. And the council has been quite open about that. So don't be saying we need to accept responsibility for it. We're grown-ups at this side of the chamber, we accept responsibility for it. But we also understand that this is a very complex, very technical, and because of your government, very costly thing. It's costing us millions of pounds extra, because your policies are forcing families into their children being at risk, because they cannot cope with austerity politics. So I will not be lectured by you on this, by the way. This is a problem caused by your government, and you should not believe... government, and you should at least have the courage to say, except, you know what, councillor Miller, since you've accepted that this Labour Party has said that we are partially responsible for that, and we've accepted it and we've moved with it, you should accept responsibility for your government's position and in putting us in this place in the first place. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to thank my colleagues for the support across the chamber, it's been a very good debate. And obviously, I would expect people to support the substantive motion, because the revenue budget and the capital budget are deserved and good documents. Thank you.
We just have to grant it indeed. We now turn to the vote, the vote on the substantive motion. Madam Mayor, there are 44 votes in favour, no abstentions, and 11 votes against, and therefore the motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Leader, I now call upon the leader of the council to move the approval and adoption of the report on Human Resources Committee.
Aye, so move, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Leader, do second that report.
Second, Madam Mayor.
Leader, would you like to speak to the report?
No, Madam Mayor, it's fully laid out.
Councillor Maudy, would you like to speak to the report?
Nothing to add, Madam Mayor.
Any member wish to speak, please raise your hand. Do you accept the report?
Agree.
That concludes the meeting, thank you very much.